Okay, all right. So that said, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Ashland Planning Ball Planning Board meeting to order here at 7:25 PM. This is Thursday, August 12th. So before going over the agenda this evening, as I have done at all of the meetings I have chaired recently, I'd like to acknowledge that I am the Vice Chair of the Board. However, due to the fact that our current Chair, Tricia Kendall's husband, is the Chair of the Mindus School Committee, I will again be acting as Chair of this meeting for this evening. So before jumping in here, I'm going to briefly cover, go over the agenda for this evening. So at 7:15 PM, we're going to begin, continue our public hearing for 90 Concord Street, which is the Mindus School project, which is a special permit and a site plan review, which has been, which has continued from July 27th. Next on our agenda for this evening, which was scheduled for 6:45, was a continued public hearing on 100 Chestnut Street. This item has been continued to our next meeting on Thursday, August 26th. So we will not be discussing the 100 Chestnut Street Special Permit Insight Plan Review this evening. Next on our agenda for this evening, scheduled at 8:15 PM, was a continued public hearing for 355 West Union Street, which is a site plan review. This is TJ's Restaurant. This will be continued likely to the first meeting in September. We will not be discussing that agenda item this evening. And then lastly, scheduled for 8:20 PM, was a continued public hearing for Zero McGonka Road, which is a site plan review. This item will be continued from this evening to August 26th. So we will not be discussing that item. So the only item we will be discussing this evening, other than potential minute review or administrative matters, will be the public hearing for 90 Concord Street, the Mindus School Project. So with that said, I'd like to just, within the, within the continued public hearing for 90 Concord Street, I'd like to just give kind of a high level sense of how we'd like to structure this meeting for this evening. So we're going to begin this topic this evening with an update from the applicant on a number of different questions and inquiries from the planning board. And they've got some materials to share with us and to give us an update on, based on follow-up items from the board from our last meeting. After that, after that, we'll do some commentary and question on the presentation of materials for a period. The planning board driving through that commentary will then take some public comments. After that, we're going to target to, to kind of clearly delineate the issues around the, this project as we see them and kind of begin to build and discuss consensus on them, you know, item by item. So high level, that's, that's the way we're going to try to structure this this evening. So that said, Mr. Kendall, if you would like to lead us out?
Sure, I'm just going to let Bill Beatrice start the presentation and take it from there.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Paul. Thank you. I will share my screen. Everyone see that? Okay?
Yeah, and, and I know, I know the planning board knows, knows all the consultants, but if just introduce yourselves and your role in the, on the project. If you do, that'd be great.
Yep. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna do that. As, as many of you know, I'm Bill Beatrice. I'm the Project Manager for Flansburgh Architects. With me tonight on the line is Kent Kovacs. He's the Principal in charge for Flansburgh and Chelsea Volmer from our offices here as well. In addition to the Flansburgh team, we have several representatives on the line from our design team. We have representatives from Stimson, our landscape architect, Simpson Studio, Niche Engineering. They're the civil engineers for the project and RG VanderWaal, our electrical engineer. I will let those team members introduce themselves as they come up to speak during the presentation, if that's okay. And maybe before we dive into the presentation, I'll just do a quick little kind of high level recap things we've done to date. The design team did receive the questions and comments from the town's peer review. We responded to those questions and comments. And that package was resubmitted to the planning board and it is currently under review by the, by the town's peer, the town's agent. We met last Saturday on site with the Conservation Commission to do a walkthrough. And we had our Conservation Commission meeting on Monday as well. So I would say that after those two meetings, I believe that the Conservation Commission does have a really good handle on the existing conditions and our, our proposed design. Not that I'm, we'll speak for them, but we do have a slide in this presentation to kind of highlight the under drainage and the swell. It's the same, one of the same things we presented at the CONSCOM meeting. So just by way of keeping both boards up to speed. So with that, I will kind of watch into it. And for tonight's presentation, we want to kind of focus on some of the comments and questions we've heard at the previous meetings specifically. I want to talk about the existing property bounds, the southeast edge property, the southeast property edge, the entry sign location, an existing oak tree that exists on site. I have an updated photometric plan. And as I mentioned earlier, we do have a proposed swell and the under drainage design. We can talk. So getting right into the existing property bounds. It was noted at a previous meeting, I forgot which one, but that we did find on site several existing markers and property. And then the question was, well, which ones, where are they? So, and these are all noted on the existing survey. But what you see here is each one of these red circles highlights or locates an existing marker that was found out on site and noted. So the bottom line here is there's no, there's no question about where the property lines are from our point, point of view. The site has been accurately surveyed and documented by a licensed professional. And as you can kind of see here, we were able to find several existing markers and bounds around the site. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Eddie Marshall from Simpson and really kind of dive into the heart of this presentation, which is really focused on the southeast property edge. And Eddie, I'll just turn it over to you.
I think you're on mute.
I think I'm mute. I think he can unmute. I think somebody needs to make him a co-host. Someone could make Eddie Marshall a co-host.
He is a co-host.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Eddie Marshall from Stimson Studio, Principal. And so we wanted to follow up from the last meeting and talk about this southeast property edge. And just to provide the clarity in terms of what's existing and how we are working with these elements. What you see in red is the, an existing chain link fence. And what's important to note is where that chain link fence sits in relationship to the property line. So as you come into the site off of Concord Street, that chain link fence is basically, you know, just inboard of the property line. Once you turn the corner and move to the north, you can see that there is a, that, that distance varies between probably eight, 10 or 12 feet between the existing property lining and the existing chain link fence. And as Bill just mentioned, we're pretty accurate in terms of where the property line is. What you see for the trees that have been designated, those are all the existing trees. They vary in size, but this, you know, when it comes to landscape and how we change your site, we want to be very mindful of what's existing and what we can save. Obviously, the, there's a 30-foot front yard setback when you're at Concord Street. And then that drops to a lower setback. Once you turn the corner and you move into this area by the fields. So you, we have the chain link fence, the property line in the trees. It kind of makes up kind of the, the, the bones of what that landscape is, is as well as that wetland area. And we have it, you know, designated for the, you know, the different bounds. And we've talked about that. And I think the, honestly, I think the wetland has always been very accurately depicted on the plans. Now to go to our proposed design. Let's start talking about the fence. We are proposing that we would have a four-foot-high board fence that would parallel the entry drive from Concord Street. This would be actually pulled off of the edge of Concord Street by about 25 feet to provide good visibility when you're, essentially when you're exiting the site. That board fence comes and follows the existing chain link fence line. So we want to be clear that the, that where the fence is now is where the fences will be in the future. That now, and that changes once we turn that corner and move to the east, that four-foot fence becomes a six-foot fence. So we have a six-foot run of fence that runs essentially that entire area of where we would be changing the site, putting in the parking. And it's also the topography actually helped us out because where, where we stop the fences also where the, the grade starts to get higher. And that becomes a little bit more problematic to start to put a fence in. So you can see we are able to save all of the existing trees, except the one that you see in pink or orange. And we have augmented that with a series of 26 evergreen trees that we have spaced along this fence line. And we have also jumped those across the entry, the entry drive into the bioswale basin. So actually, let me rephrase that because I'm looking at my own notes. So it's, it'll be a total of 36 trees. And so we are looking to have a series of evergreens that are both broadleafed and needle in order to kind of augment the, that whole entry experience, integrate a stronger buffer between the neighbors in the school property. We've also included a section, if you want to go to the next slide, Bill. So what this section shows is, is that slice through the property line at 130 Concord Street. So you can see that nine and a half feet between where the property line is and where that six-foot-high board fence would be, a 25-foot planting buffer. The parent drop-off road of 24 feet. We have a shoulder on the other side and then the bioswale. That's obviously the bioswale. Dimensions vary as you kind of move up and down the bioswale. But in, in this area of the section, it's 17 feet wide. So it's a total of 95 feet from the property line to the parking lot in this instance. And it gives us a nice opportunity to introduce a series of different types of planting and to augment some of the plants that are already there today. Our next slide gives an example of some of the, the, the plant types. And so the idea of both broadleafed and needled evergreen, obviously the American holly is a broadleafed evergreen and with the, with the fir and the white pine being more needled. The image on the bottom is an example of a six-foot-high white cedar board fence. And that is what is being proposed along that, the longer length of that property line. And remember, as you turn and start to run parallel to the entry drive, that drops to a four-foot fence. What we really like about white cedar is that this is obviously a brand-new fence. This will weather to a gray. It, it really starts to recede very nicely in the landscape. And the question came up, what's the longevity of a cedar fence? I would say conservatively, they're between 15 and 20 years. I have seen them go between 20 and 30 years. So depending on soil moisture and things like that, they can often last longer than the 15 to 20 years. But we think it's, it's a very nice look. It's a look that's, they'll be very quiet. And thinking that the, it's, it's really the evergreen trees that over time will, will really do a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of what we are looking at and how do we create this nice buffer between neighborhood and school property. We also wanted to talk about the entry sign.
Absolutely.
So on our entry sign, obviously, we went through this at our last meeting. And this is obviously it's six feet, five inches in height on this field stone base, which you're trying to relate to some of the field stone walls that were there on site. And also having that 10 feet, nine inches in length. But the, obviously, that's the size of the base, but in terms of the sign itself, it's, it's smaller. It's eight feet, one inch by two feet, seven inches. So that is set inside that larger frame. And obviously, the Mindus School, it becomes, you'll be able to read that all the time. There'll be times where you can actually shut the sign off. So I think that was one of the other concerns people had, but you know, that we could start to think about the timing of that sign. And at certain times, the day or evening, that can be shut off. But what we wanted to show at this meeting that we didn't have last meeting was, this is an image taken from Google or Google Maps. And we have inserted that sign in that location. So this is the sign looking west. We have another one that will look east. So this gives you a kind of a sense of size and scale. Obviously, we want to be sensitive to the scenic byway nature of Concord Street. And we did these studies. We also took it a step further. If you go to the next slide, Bill. What if we took that slide where we had it and put it over in that median strip between the entry drive and the exit drive? Also taking that side, sign in pushing it back 20 feet. That will provide good visibility if you're waiting there to exit. It also starts to tuck that sign a little bit further back off of Concord Street. And we also had similar images. So this is that same sign, same size, pushback in the median strip. And I, I think it has a nice feel to it because it really feels like it's, it's part of kind of the, the, the school landscape. And obviously, if it's there to let folks know what's going on in the school or what's going on in the town, you know, everybody will be seeing that if you're either going into the school or leaving the school. And then we also have another view from the other direction. So this gives you that same scale. It's pushed back a little bit further. I think it's more respectful of the history of byway that's, that's Concord Street. And so we wanted to be thorough on that, the existing oak tree. So this is kind of the, our biggest challenge. And if you want to go to the next slide. This is, it's a challenge for us as landscape architects because what we want to do is save trees. And this is, this is a tough call. Because we have a tree that is 100 plus years old. It's a white oak tree. It's, it's, has a large stature in size. But in terms of what is going to happen to this tree over time, it will be challenging. So as, as a design team, we started this conversation, we have a 50/50 chance of saving this tree. And let me just walk you through some of the pros and cons of that. Because I think this other folks in the call that should also be weighing in in terms of construction methodology and things, or what could impact this tree. But some of the things that the tree has going for it is actually this concrete wall. So this concrete wall actually acts as a, is this oversized planter for the tree. So when you look at that image on the right and then you swing back and look at that plan, you can see that all of the roots will be kind of growing to the north side. So when we think of the existing Mindus School and that tree is 30 feet away, the wall itself is, is 20 feet away. There'll be a lot of construction when they take down the school. But we have the concrete wall to save the tree. This is where this, and now is where we think about the new construction is where the, the whole story starts to turn. We have the tree in this very prominent location on, on our landscape. It's part of that historic gravesite. When we think about where the tree is in relationship to new construction is where the, this conversation starts to get a little bit more challenging for me. The tree is 18 feet away from the corner of, of the new construction. It's also where all of the roots of this tree has gone. Because the, the, the roots, the roots could not grow in a more subtlety direction because of the concrete wall. So they're back into this woodland. Two things will happen. First, that woodland will be pulled away to construct the new school. When that woodland gets pulled away, it pulls away the whole neighborhooding community that this oak tree has been living in. And, and, and trees do not behave independently when they're in the woods. They really act as a, as a larger system. So that's the first level of stress that this tree will go under once that, those woodlands are pulled away and stripped away. The second part of this is when the new construction happens. And talking to Sean, they felt that they would need eight feet from the face of the building out in order to construct the building, which I give them a lot of credit for that. I think it's conservative because we all know everything that's going to happen at this corner of the tree. And when you see where that darker gray tone is, as it cuts into the canopy of the tree. And we actually, so it's just quickly to dive back to the canopy of tree. We, we roughly estimated it's probably about a 48 to 50-foot canopy. But most of that canopy starts to lean towards the north. And we know most of the roots are in that, that northern boundary. So if this were a tree that had roots in a 360-degree arrangement or the growing opportunity, then where we have that cut in for construction would be less of an impact. But we know all the roots will be to the north. Where we do cut in will, will impact a lot of the roots within the canopy. Typically, in these type of situations, we are mindful that we would have an arborist out there. This tree would need pruning. It would need to be cabled. We'd want to have it fertilized. We'd put up a protection fence around it. And when we say protection fence, we want to go out to the drip edge. And then we have to cut back in where Sean would have to come in for construction. Would we want to be quite mindful of soil compaction? And we would do that by putting in blankets of woodchips. And I think it's also important that how this tree would be cared for over that construction process. Because if we had summers like we had two years ago, when things were quite dry and quite hot, it's, it's been kind of hot and miserable, but it's, at least it's been moist and wet, which is better for the plants. But now, it, that tree would be under a tremendous amount of stress. So going back where I started this conversation, we have a 50/50 chance of saving this. But we also end up with a tree that we, we know will be in a weakened condition. And a tree this age has less versatility about pushing out new growth. If it was a younger tree and we're giving this type of impact to it, it, it becomes more resilient. It's, you know, the trees age the same way we do. When we're younger, we're more resilient. As we get older, we're less so. Same thing with the tree. And so we are, this is, this is part of a, a design team challenge. And that's where I started this conversation. It's, it, we only have a 50/50 chance of saving this. And I, I think it's important that other members of this team weigh in. But it's, 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 it's going to be challenging to save it. We also know that once the new construction happens, what is really nice is the concrete wall that you see now, we'll keep that wall. But the grade gets pulled up. So what's, what's really nice about this corner and where the graveside is, we'll have new plantings, new fence. Everything gets enhanced very nicely. The grade of where the, where the grave is will actually relate very nicely to the entrance walkways that, that have been designed. Bill or Paul, I don't know, this is kind of a long-winded way of, of really not coming up with a really clear answer. But I, I just wanted to lay everything out there that we, we are looking at opportunities. But we, we want, we want to exercise a degree of practicality in terms of what we would be asking everybody.
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in and I'll let Phil Conroy chime in too as well. I mean, Eddie, like you said, this was a, this is a challenge for the entire team. So, you know, when we got our collective heads together and we were all looking at this and, and, you know, based upon the fact that these roots are, are, are more north. You know, this is a 50/50 at best saving scenario. And Phil, could you comment upon construction in your experience? You know, of saving trees of this nature, this close to an active, a very active construction zone?
Yep. So one thing that we, we did not touch on specifically is that eight-foot zone, that is our, our impact zone with our foundation excavations. So we're also benching away from the furthest, from that eight-foot mark down roughly six feet to the building foundation. So we're, we're having, you know, a six-foot excavation within the canopy of that tree. And we're working very close to, assuming as Eddie had said, that the, the roots grew more toward the north. We could potentially be impacting some of the anchor roots, which could lead to a safety issue during construction as we're working to, to build the building. The other thing to consider is while we're, you know, primarily focused in this image on the excavations for the foundation, I also have a facade to construct within that space. And as Eddie said, we've, we've said that we, we think we could do it for, in eight feet. That, that's extremely tight. That's just wide enough to get our scaffolding in there. So we're, we're constantly going to be going through there. This isn't going to be, you know, a prune the tree, set the fence up, and we're going to be working outside the drip line for the next 19 months. This is going to be a consistent presence within that zone, that gray zone for 19 months of construction. And, and one of the things you can see here is, you know, with that root system growing to the north and those, those capillary branch or roots headed in that direction, we're, we're taking out almost a quarter of those capillary roots. Albeit, we could hire an arborist and do it in a more surgical manner. But those roots are still being impacted. And typically, when you're trying to save a tree like this, you want to be 100% outside the drip edge of that tree. And you want to do your pruning at that location. And that, I feel in my experience, is when you get to the 50/50 number, when you start coming into the drip line, I, I think that 50/50 number starts becoming more of a 60/40 number.
I would just, I'll, I'll just, I'll just conclude it. I mean, in conclusion, I think the team looked at this very hard. But our recommendation is not to save this tree. It's not, it's unlikely it will happen. It's unfortunate, but the reality of construction, the age of the tree and everything that we've talked about here, it does not seem practical.
Bill and Phil, Jim Adam Superintendent, I just want to make sure that I asked this question because I think as someone who's in, in charge of making sure that our students and our faculty, staff and any and one who visits our sites are safe long-term, not just during this process. But we talked about, Eddie talked about the compromising of the tree, potentially long-range. And, and I'm concerned, I want to make sure that I'm on record that with this tree still being here, it could potentially pose some, some risk and safety concerns for our students in the future. Is that a fair and accurate statement on my end?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
If I, if I could, this is Anna Testmanitsky speaking up and a planning board member. So I just want to clarify, this particular issue or problem of the existing tree became a problem during the site plan visit on Saturday, right? Because prior to that, the plan was to remove it, am I right?
This, this was always, we, we try to save all trees on the site. But as I said, on the walkthrough, we've known for a while with this location, it was going to be exceedingly difficult and unlikely we'd be able to save it.
Right. So I, I, I was present at the time of the site walk on Saturday. And when a question was asked as to what would happen to that tree, Paul, am I right that you said it, it would be removed together with the about 500 other trees from the property?
I never gave any other number. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay. But you, you did indicate that the plan was to remove it, right?
I said, I, what I said is it, I said, I, what I said is that we are unlikely to be able to save it. Correct.
Um, so the issue of whether this tree can survive, the fifty-fifty percent chance issue is a discussion because of where we're putting the building, am I right?
Correct.
Okay. So it would have had a hundred percent chance of survival if we, if the building is situated slightly differently, right?
Probably more than slightly, yes.
Okay. And am I right that this is the, that that there is a tree depicted within the fenced environment? But let me step back a little bit. This fence was pictured at the schematic design phase presentation at the special town meeting, right?
Yeah. So the grave and that that site, we'll probably, I'm assuming we'll probably replace the fence, but yeah, we're going to highlight it, we're going to fence it. Those we plantings around it, there've always been a plan for landscaping around it and highlighting the the graveside.
Did the schematic design phase presentation at the special town meeting include a tree within the fenced area?
It probably, it was a rendering, so I don't think the planting plan was was done, but it was probably a small tree, I would imagine. But Eddie, you you're, you're probably better to answer that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we we had always planned to have a tree there.
So looking at this, if I'm looking at the schematic design phase presentation from the special town meeting from January twenty-third two thousand twenty-one, and I'm looking at a rendering of the Mendes campus and there's a number eight on it and underneath there's a little fence with a tree inside the fence and a larger tree outside of the fence. Am I correct that this is what the public saw on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one?
If you're looking at it, you're looking at it. That that was the presentation. I'm not sure what you're, what you're asking.
I I just want to understand what was presented to the public as to how this might appear. Am I, am I accurate in in that that was visual at the time of the presentation?
If you're looking at the presentation, it's the presentation. I'm not sure how else to answer.
I don't, I don't have other questions right now. Thank you. You can keep going with your presentation.
Billy, if I could add one, one L, one clarifying element. The sighting of the building, this area would most likely still be disturbed by construction. So I would not say that the tree could be any living species under derastoring construction operation is subject to dieback and or death. So I would not say with confidence that it would be a hundred percent saved. Just in the presence of having to do some site work, regardless of where the building goes. I would assume that this area would still be disturbed.
And could the applicant speak to why we care about this tree at all? Why are we discussing this tree, not another tree?
It's a question that came up on the walkthrough.
The applicant is presenting this slide as a discussion item. So I'm curious to the applicant, what is the significance of this tree?
Well, obviously, it's the size and scale of the tree. It's the age of the tree. Obviously, it's been on the this site for a a long time. And it's been part of our design discussions for a while in terms of keeping it or the challenges. You know, around trying to save it. And so I think it probably came through more in my presentation that it's it's been challenging for us to come up with a clean answer in terms of saving or removing. And I think that's been certainly part of our our dilemma. As we've gone through this design process.
The grave of the Revolutionary War veteran there is not the issue in in talking about this tree?
Well, uh, I'm not following. So we always felt that the, we weren't going to touch the grave site. So we were, and we wanted to be respectful of the grave site.
I think what she's getting at is, oh, as a relationship, there wasn't any relationship as it relates to the design team. So
Okay.
It's 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 important from the design team and the project team and the building committee, just as it's a mature tree that we're trying to save is you know, trying to save as many as we can, including there's a cluster to the to the west of the building that is inside the loop road that we will try to save as many in that in that cluster as we can. So it's it's really the reason why it's important is its maturity. And the reason why it's we're highlighting in this presentation is because you and several community members have expressed concerns and a desire to to save it. And so we wanted to share publicly the thought process of the project team on, you know, that dialogue that we've had, you know, during our project meetings, but we wanted to have it here because it was meaningful to the community.
I I will state that I don't believe I made a comment at the site walk as to an opinion as to whether that should be saved. I asked a lot of questions about it, just so we're clear on the public record. And just so I understand, the applicant is in no way took into consideration the fact that there's a grave underneath those roots or within those roots, right? That's not part of your concern with the tree. Am I understanding the applicant correctly?
Well, we have a concern about the, about the grave, but review, it's, it's kind of a two-part question in that we 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 know what's going to happen around the street. And we know that there's a, that that is a grave there. Obviously, if we could with confidence save this tree, we would. But we get back to the fact that it's it's going to go through a lot of stress. And I think we would have, you know, to to for us to say that we can save this tree would would not be practical. It would not be in our, in in our best advice. So granted, we have a challenge of where the grave is in relationship to the tree.
So Eddie, that's a different way. You don't see this tree and its root system as part of the grave site, am I right?
Well, it it's obviously part of the grave site. But trying to save it is another matter. I I I agree that that is part of the, part of the grave site.
Okay. Is there some obligation for us to protect a grave site?
Well, we are protecting a grave site.
About a grave site. There's a grave and there's a grave site. The site's around a grave, right? And we all agree that it's proximity there. But it, I don't, I'm not sure. I think it's better if you ask a clear, clearer question.
When you designed the building and the placement of the building, you were not concerned about saving this tree, am I right?
I would say our priority is picking the proper location for a building that's going to serve this community for the next fifty to a hundred years. That was, that was a higher priority than any particular tree on the site.
Thank you.
So I think we should continue on with this presentation and cover any other materials the applicant would like to present. And then we can come back on and circle up on issues across the board.
So with that, I will speak briefly to the photometric plan. And this was an item that came up as part of the peer review. Our initial photometric plan did show some light spillage out onto Concord Street and into this neighborhood yard here. That's what they they flagged. We have adjusted the layout and submitted calculations to to alleviate alleviate that concern. Then the final slide tonight will be the proposed swell and under drainage design. And for this, I will, I will turn the, turn the show over to Aaron Gallagher or Brittany, were you going to speak to this?
Yes, I'm going to speak about this.
Okay, thank you.
So with the construction of the new site here, we have some runoff from the hillside on the east that is going to be coming down. We want to make sure that that doesn't get onto our site and cause issues. So we are proposing to construct a swell that's shown in purple here along the right side of the new parking lot. It goes up behind the building. And that swell will collect the runoff from that slope. And it will direct it to the intermittent stream on the southeast corner of the site. So in the existing condition runoff from this slope is directed to that intermittent stream both over land and through a pipe, a twelve-inch pipe that goes underneath the existing fields. And we are basically just going to provide a new pathway for that water to get where it is going in the existing condition. So the graphic that you see in the center at the top is an example of what one of these conveyance swells could look like. So it's just going to be a hardy planting in the swell. And on the left, you can see a detail. So it's going to be a one and a half foot deep swell that's two feet wide at the base. And then it has three to one side slope, so not too steep on the sides. And then underneath the surface, we're going to have a little bit of soil. And then we're going to have a crushed stone base with a perforated pipe. And that will allow water to drain from the surface of the swell into the bottom. And it will help just convey all of the water from the slope down into the intermittent stream. And so just for a little bit more clarification, you can see kind of where that swell stops at the top of the page. There is an isolated vegetated wetland there. And a little bit to the east of that, you can see, it's very faint on this, but there's a little bit of a dashed line. So in that blow up at the top, right, that dashed line that you saw on the white is shown in brown here. And that is flow that is coming from offsite. There is a detention basin on a different property. And in large storm events, water from that overtops the basin and flows through our site. So again, the swell is just going to be a measure that is helping to keep that water that exists today away from our proposed site and just route it to where it should be going. And that swell is going to be relatively shallow sloped, about, I think, one percent. And where the runoff from the steeper slopes is coming, especially in that channelized way from offsite, we're going to have a a stone check dam there and that will help slow the water down before it is really coming through the swell. And then at the base of the swell, it's going to connect, there is a twelve-inch for gated metal pipe that discharges into the intermittent stream currently. And we're just going to connect the water right back into that twelve-inch pipe so that I can continue where it goes today. And then I think the other thing that we wanted to talk about on this slide is the under drainage. So the proposed building is going to have an under drain system that will help collect any groundwater that's building up around the foundation and convey it away from the building. And there's an existing field under drainage system, which is that twelve-inch pipe that I had talked about discharging to the intermittent stream that also collects a field under drain system. And those are the only under drain systems that are in the existing and proposed condition. Does anyone have any questions about our swell?
So just, I want to highlight two things for the planning board, just that came out of our conservation commission meeting.
Yes.
That are new and new, based on the plans that we have. So if you see that parking spot that is near the isolated wetlands up there, as part of our conversation with them, we agreed we were going to move it to the extent we can, a little bit to the east, to that tip, that corner of it is a little bit further away from the isolated wetlands. So that will be on an updated set. It's forthcoming. And I think Brittany mentioned it. The other thing is the swell where the that fast-moving water from the retention basin is coming down and entering the swell. That little rock rock, I'm having a brain fart on the rock some fair is is new as well, a detail from the the site walk to slow that down so it doesn't erode this well. So just wanted to point out the, what is not on the submitted plans from Monday, because it was based on walk through on Saturday and the conservation commission meeting on Monday.
And that, that concludes our presentation. So we will entertain any questions from the board.
Um, after the site walk on August seventh, I had provided Peter with a series of questions and follow-up. I just want to make sure the applicant received them. And will the applicant be providing a written comment, just as they did in response to the prior questions given the applicant?
Yes, we will. They were received, we, they are, they have been received and we will provide a written comment. Written responses, yes.
Does the applicant wish to address some of those issues today or or prefer us to have written comments?
If you want to ask something, but you're obviously free to do that if, but only if you want to bring it up here.
Assuming the applicant is going to provide written comment, I I believe that means we're going to have further discussion on that written comment. Is that right, Peter?
I think, and I, and I, I think broadly, you know, we're, we we need to kind of ring fence kind of issues where we are here and have a larger discussion with the board in terms of you know, where we think we are on those issues as a board. And and if I think there's a possibility, to be honest with you, that we're going to start towards the end of the evening tonight, talking about conditions of a decision and maybe moving towards a draft decision. But that will kind of depend on our discussion on, you know, laying out the issues and seeing where people are. If there's a lot of follow-up and questions from people around the issues on this, I think we we might have additional meetings if the consensus is that we're headed towards conditions and trying to draft a decision for the next meeting, we 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 may not have a lot of additional meetings. So.
Understood. So so there may not be an opportunity for further discussion of a written comment. So in that case, I will just sit back and let other members of the board ask questions for now. And I'll refrain from rehashing the questions that I already written and come back to it if I feel that it doesn't come up.
Okay. That's that's probably good. Thank you. So we do have a pretty sizable participant list. I do see a number of hands raised. So planning board members, based on the presentation and materials we've seen here, do you guys, does the board have any additional questions or follow-ups directly for the applicant here? Or should we at this point kind of open this up to public comment on, based on what we've seen so far this evening?
I have two comments, questions. Joe, at this time, one is in regard to the sign. I appreciated the renderings shown to get a view of what those signs, the sign might look like in those various locations. But I'm assuming, given what was talked about at the last meeting, that that sign is kind of a placeholder of about how big the sign will be that you intend suggesting that it has a stone base. But it's not an actual rendering of what the sign will look like, that that we know the project is in less than sixty percent designed. And I assume this sign isn't a hundred percent designed and that will go through your normal kind of design process of something. So first impression of the school type of thing.
I think that's accurate.
So there's more to the design of the sign coming and the the renderings were meant to give an idea of point of view and scale and how you might experience that sign.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And for what it's worth to the applicant, kind of piggybacking on Tricia's comments is the way I'm thinking about the sign is, you know, I don't think that we're, that the planning board is interested in designing the sign or knowing the materials the sign is made of. I think I think if, to the extent that it's a part of our decision, it's, we would, we would probably want to just conclude on the positioning and the setback and have agreement on that and let the the school committee go through the material sourcing and and so forth along those lines. I don't, that that's where I am. Again, we'll have follow-up discussion on this, but I think that's how I'm thinking about it anyway.
I think, I think that's, I think it's totally fair. And I think while it's not designed, that rendering in the, in that image, you know, it gives you an idea of what the design team is thinking with it. So it will be in that direction and we'll we'll obviously be reviewing it in in public meetings and and welcome feedback at that time. So.
I noticed, Paul, the applicant.
I had a second, I had a second thing that I wanted to talk about. And that is I had a second, I had a second thing that I wanted to talk about, and that is though I appreciate the amount of detail and patience that the design team has had, I think with us with the numerous kind of questions about drainage and wetlands and stormwater and how those things work. Obviously, the planning board has some interest in how the site, the site works as we do site plan review, and that's something we always want to look at. However, we also know that the main responsibility for those, for those bylaws, section 280, which is wetlands protection, sections 343 stormwater management, section 247, which is stormwater management from the EPA point of view, that these really, these are really spelled out in the bylaws, having a very firm kind of undeniable root in the conservation commission, that they really have jurisdiction over this. And the professionals that deal with those things sit on the conservation commission, which I know the applicant is going through a rigorous process as well. So I appreciate you keeping us up to date on those issues. So we kind of understand how they relate to the site as a whole. But I would, for one member of the planning board, hope that our discussion tonight doesn't venture too far into a territory that really belongs to someone else where we can't really make a call on conservation commission issues. And I guess it's more of a comment than a question, so thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Black, Shmee and Deepa, do you have anything, comments or questions for the applicant before we open a conversation up to a public commentary?
I just have one quick question. I know this topic came when we were talking about the public safety building and when we were talking about scenic road rules. So the number, as part of our landscaping design, the number of trees that's going to get planted in the school, is it greater than the trees that we're going to have to take down, including this oak tree?
That's an excellent question. I'd have to go back and do the count, but I know we are, you've seen our plans, so we are. So honestly, I haven't done the kind of the balancing, but I, you know, you've seen our plan. So we are intending to have a substantial number of plants and trees and shrubs to really try to knit this building back into the site.
Right. And do we leave the option since this oak tree might have to come down? Can we plant the oak tree somewhere else as part of it? Maybe you already have it designed.
But we can absolutely do that. And the other thing, I know there's been a lot of talk about building placement. But knowing that we have a building in a site that we have to place a new building and keep the existing building. A lot of, when we think about saving trees, this is where the push pull came in terms of the more we moved the whole building to the north, we were cutting down a lot more trees. We were impacting more slope and topography. And so every time we did that, it was kind of an exponential hit to kind of the trees that were there. So it was, it was with a lot of thought and consideration of the entire team in terms of how things were placed. And there was, so obviously, it's a, it's a, there's a lot going on in the site. And hopefully, once everything is done and in the existing building goes away, then the kind of the generosity of the site returns.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we put more than we take out, so at least that way. Thanks.
And I can say that's, that's always been the goal. And as we get to the end, so just as far as a process goes, there are contingencies built into the budget. And as we get to the end, obviously, the landscaping and the planting happen at the end. There may be opportunities and we'll look for those opportunities wherever it's possible. We obviously can't make it too dense. We want the plantings to flourish and not, not be suffocated, but that's always been the goal. So it'll be to the best of our ability, both, both from a logistics perspective and a financial perspective, we're going to do our best for.
Thank you.
So Deepa, do you have anything?
Not much, but I'm curious to listen to our community because I see a lot of raised hands. But I was just curious, was there any thought given to kind of reusing that 100 year old tree? Because I know there are situations that in our construction industry that it is really hard sometimes to make that call. But we've also kind of used that as a celebration into the school itself to kind of make sure that that's still part of that. This one, I don't know if that school committee or this building, school has thought about kind of if there is a situation, unfortunately, irrespective of how hard we try as human beings, has there been a thought moving forward to see if we can kind of still celebrate that kind of that life of that tree?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a really good point. We haven't really given that a lot of thought. Paul, I know you want to add to that.
Yeah, no, I, and Eddie knows this because we've had conversations around that. And every time I want to, I want to say, throw out ideas, the project team wants to kick me. Because I make it sound like, hey, yeah, we can do this. And they're like, yeah, we've tried that on other projects. So that's on our radar. It's something we want to do. I'm, I'm, I'm an optimist and I'm saying, why can't we do something? And if I say, say it, I say it in a public mean, they'll probably kick me afterwards. But we're definitely looking to try to do something. The, but even, you know, I'll throw out some of the things I said to them. I say, well, can we take it and find a place that will mill it and use the wood to create an accent wall or a bench or something? And, you know, the, we have, we're lucky to have a lot of professionals on them. And they, they quickly say, we tried that and we couldn't find a mill that would do it. You'd have to, and it becomes a larger challenge than it would appear at first, but we're, you know, so no guarantees on what that would be. I'm certainly willing to, we're willing to entertain anybody's ideas. But, you know, like I said, every time I start throwing out ideas, the project team says, well, yeah, but we can, we can keep that on the radar, but don't get your hopes up to, we found the challenging to do this or that or the other thing. But it is something we want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, I think we're going to shift into comments from the public here. I want to acknowledge a couple of things here before we open this up. Between the last meeting and this meeting, the planning board has received a fair bit of email from the community with comments on this project. I would say, you know, the comments have been, you know, ranging in general, but we acknowledge that there's been a significant outpouring of support for this project as construed and as designed. And there has been, you know, a smaller percentage of commentary on, you know, various other matters around the project and around some of the issues that we've been discussing for all of the meetings we've had on this. So I want to acknowledge that and say that the planning board is in receipt and has seen the commentary. And I would just say, as we go into this public commentary section, please, there are a number of people on this call, there are a number of people raised hands, please try to keep your comments concise. And, you know, try to keep your questions to two for now and feel free to raise your hand and kind of get back in line at the podium, if you will. So with that, Peter, if you would like to begin letting, unmuting people and get into this.
Sure, I'm just going to go down the list I have in my, just going to go down my list I have to decide. So first I will ask Mr. Mark DeSoni to unmute.
Okay, thank you. Mark DeSoni. Very great upgrade of the plans there. Everything seems to be so concise and understanding. There was two, there was two parts of the updated plans I was really happy about. One of them was about where the sign could be put out. You have different, two different places. One of them was at the corner of the corner of the entrance, and the other one was in the, in between, in the middle. And that middle one struck me, it's like, it's like I was seeing the, the middle high school, Union Street, that's where that sign got put. And I'm saying that's, that'd be a great place for that middle, that meant there's sign to be right, right in the middle at the entrance exits. And if you picture the middle high school, Union Street, and where that sign is, that's what I'm saying, it's a good spot for that.
Thank you for that comment, Mark.
Then I got another one. And the the drainage system and the, and the underground and all, there works with the pipes. It may, looks like a very, very great way of having a water flow. So you don't have any backups in any, any basins. So it won't have any sort of flooding situations or water over the top. So that went through a lot of work and brainstorming and who designed that. That's the I'm trying to look on the white page here. Okay, that's the woman speaker who talked about it. And the purple up in the upper right hand corner is, is the the great, the good, the good sense of saying, that's where it'd be a good dissecting and flowing instrument for the water flow and the stream. And to get down to the everywhere that it's supposed to be going to for pipes. That's it. Thank you.
Mark, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, I will unmute Kathy Rooney.
Hello. Sorry about that.
Just do your, your name and address. I'm sorry, we didn't ask Mark to do that. I should have.
That's all right. Kathy Rooney, 136 Fountain Street. So before I ask two of my several questions I have, and I'm trying to be quick and succinct, I just wanted to thank everybody involved in this project for all the time and effort they've spent on it because it's meant hundreds of hours of committee discussion before it even got to the application point, the contractors, the consultants, everybody's spent a lot of time on this. And it's not that we don't appreciate it and don't appreciate all the time and effort gone into the planning. We're, we're, in particular, I'm hoping to tweak a couple of things, but that being said, I'm I am certain that you can save that tree. I'd like to talk to somebody on the consultant staff and see if there's a way that they can talk to a consultant that I know that could probably save that tree. And I think it might be really important, and I know it would be a challenge, and it might cost a little bit, but it would be a stunning a stunning statement about the values in our community, our cultural values, and that we honor our past and we celebrate it with a brand new, fancy, brand new, sustainable building. I'm really concerned about the trees coming down. And I appreciate the fact you've put more trees into the design, but I still think there aren't enough. And the picture of the swell that we just saw in the presentation shows a pretty vegetated swell, much more so than the moan swell that was discussed earlier as part of the operations and maintenance plan and that a moan swell would be easier, but a moan swell will not hold as much water and won't slow down the water as much as all that vegetation does. So, you know, as part of this whole thing with a swelled in the design, if you can't accurately keep that thing clean and you don't have an accurate clear and concise operations and maintenance plan, then it will fail. And I'm, I'm still.
Kathy, thank you. I, I feel like this, we could be in conservation commission territory here. So is there, is there a question with regard to this or, or do you have other comments or questions?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I understand that you think we're in conservation commission territory, but if we get some of these bad storms like this, the six inches in an hour that fell in Norwood and the site can't handle it, then we're going to have a blowout. And so yes, conservation commission does some of this, but I also think it's beholden on the planning board to also be paying attention and do some of that. That's why you ask for these documents in your site plan reviews. And I'm, so that's why I'm bringing it up. And that's why I keep bringing it up and I keep bringing up what I think should be more trees. You know, like, could we match all the trees and caliper that we're taking down on the site and put them back? Or do the equivalent thereof? That would be really awesome. And it would, it would do a lot towards, you know, moving us better into the 21st century, making this project even more sustainable and better able to withstand climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Next up, I will ask Preston Crowe. Please unmute Preston.
Thank you. I have two quick comments on two different.
Just state your name and address.
Preston Crowe, 41 Rockwood. I'm new to this, so. Sorry. About the sign, I know that we've had concerns about electronic signs in town. I believe we banned them in the zoning in some of the commercial zones. And in one of them that was grandfathered, we got an agreement where they committed to not changing what was on the sign more than once a minute so that it wouldn't have a feeling of motion to it. You may want to consider what's appropriate in this case. And I just want to make sure that the board has thought about and considered that issue, and I'll leave the rest to the board. The other topic I want to bring up is parking. I saw some online references to at least somebody being concerned that there might be too much parking. And while normally I would be in favor of having less parking and more green space, any parent who has attended events such as literacy night at the Warren School knows that you simply can't have enough parking at a school. And when the parking lots overflow, that is when you have the largest impact on the surrounding neighborhood. So don't, don't cut back on the parking. That, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Preston. And Peter?
Next up, I have Matt. Mark, Mark West.
Hi, Matthew Marshquist, 12 Wesson Road. I just had a couple of comments and questions. So I'm kind of speaking on my own behalf, although I was the former chair of the sustainability committee and followed this project pretty closely early, early on in the design stage. So our committee was really interested in a couple of things about this project. We had just passed the net zero resolution, so we were concerned with the efficiency of the building. And I will say that this committee and the design team did a great job of incorporating those goals into the project. And they ended up with a really strong building in terms of efficiency and the systems, nets are already building. So we're pretty happy with it from that standpoint. I feel comfortable saying that on behalf of the committee, although I'm speaking on my own behalf here. The other thing that came up was concern around the trees on the site. So we, you know, walked the hill behind the school and looked at the trees. I was, you know, counting the number of trees up there. We were trying to figure out, you know, is there, is there a way to kind of save more trees on the site? In the end, I think it's a compromise. I don't, I don't feel great about losing the established trees, but I did feel good about some changes that were made, including leaving a spot of established trees to the west of the school within the loop. That could have, in another project, that could have easily been something that was just turned into a flat field or hill. But, you know, I think that's going to be a nice kind of natural area. The number of trees being planted on the site does compensate, I think, for some of the loss. We care about this both from an emissions standpoint and also just from the beauty of the trees and having that natural environment. My biggest concern, I guess, is kind of like, if the trees are coming at the end of the process, you know, do we know that there's enough budget that we left to actually do the beautiful renderings that we're seeing? So I, I think that's one question is just how, how can you kind of ensure that this, this will have enough trees on the lot to compensate for that loss?
So, so Matt, that's great. So let's put that to the applicant to comment on that, if that's okay. Get you an answer.
Yeah, and I can speak a little bit to that and I can let Eddie jump in if I, if he wants to add anything to it. So the plantings that are shown on the planting plan and things like that have been estimated in part of the budget at proper, right? So I feel comfortable ensuring you that what is currently on the planting plan will occur at a minimum. So that was done as part of the estimates, part of the budgeting process. So in addition, So in addition, as we get further along in the project, there are contingencies. There's both a CM contingency for the construction manager and there's contingency for the owner. That would be the town. And as we get further along and we know we're at the end of the project, we have more confidences in where those contingencies lie as far as how much has been expended. We would have the opportunity then to add or, you know, add, add different things like more, more trees in different locations. You know, if, if that, if that's possible, and I'll let Eddie speak to just capacity of how many we could do. What I'd really love to be able to do is, is what happens on a lot of projects, I think, that unfortunately, given the funding mechanism here, we can't. And I know a lot of times projects might become before boards and they're on a restricted site and they, and they want to do these things. So what the app, but there's not an opportunity within the site proper to do something. And it's another, other projects might provide the town trees or monies to plant trees and other things on other parcels. Unfortunately, I can't offer that with this because of the funding mechanism that we, we cannot spend any of this money elsewhere, unfortunately. So, but, but I hope that answers your question. So what is on the plans is budgeted for without contingencies. And the hope is that we would have plenty of contingency at the end and be able to, with the guidance of our landscape architect, you know, you put as many as, that are practical.
Yeah, thank you for that answer. I had, yeah, I guess one other question was around, well, a comment on the tree near the grave site. I, I do appreciate the, I guess, the discussion around that because it was something I, you know, I saw the design that was presented at a town meeting and you could see there was a small tree there, another small tree. And I, I was kind of interpreting it, but I assumed that those were planted to replace the tree because they weren't large trees. And I just kind of looking at where it was in proximity to the building. So I do, do appreciate hearing, I guess, the thinking around that in more detail on how difficult it is. But I think, I, I, I guess I understand for that tree in particular. And even if it, even if you could preserve the tree, there would still be branches dropping. It's an older tree. We have a couple of older trees around our house and it's kind of a constant threat. And we're, it's sort of a question of how long we can keep them before, if they start to, to go into decline, how long we might have to, uh, when we have to remove them. So, I'm, I'm sad to see that tree go and it, it's unfortunate that it needs to go. But I think based on what you're saying about the, the site and the, basically how it's beautiful, need to move it, it's going to go into the hill more. I think it might, it might be the best, best decision to, to remove that tree. I'm, I'm trying to be a tree hugger whenever I can.
Thank you, Matt. Bill, I see Bill Novas, I just, I know, but just one question. Just for everyone's reminder, if you want to be called on, please raise your hand at the, in the bottom of the, uh, the screen by pressing the raised hand button. Bill, I do have you on my list. However, we have a couple more folks that are waiting patiently. So right now I will ask Cliff, I believe Cliff Wilson, to unmute and speak.
Hi, uh, can you hear me at all? I hope that.
Yes, we, yes, we can, Cliff.
This is a 20 year old mic that I have not used.
Can you just, Cliff, before you begin, can you just please state your full name and address, please?
Certainly. Cliff, Cliff Wilson, 378 Elliott Street.
Thank you, Cliff.
What I'd like to address tonight, now I was a little bit surprised I, that I hadn't heard it earlier. It, uh, the elephant in the room, and that is the grave site itself. And the reason I bring this up is the fact that that grave site, Aaron Brown was buried there in 1793, allegedly, along with six other folks. However, the grave site itself wasn't, I can find that it was even identified was 1877 and it was marked in 1907 by his relatives. Therefore, my thinking is number one, the only ones who actually marked any of the graves at the site were the, the family of Aaron Brown. So we don't know about the other six potential burials, nor do we really know the exact site. And so we've got under drainage coming from the building, uh, looking at the, uh, the diagram. It, it appears the under drainage is coming right next to the grave site. No, maybe 10 feet. I, I can't tell from what I. But the problem is we don't know where the grave site is. The, the corner of the building might be on the grave site. So my concern is that when construction begins, I think it's going to be a bit of a disaster if all of a sudden remains are found in areas where they're not expected to be. And I don't know if anybody has made any plans to look into that any further. And that, that basically is my, my largest. The tree is great. However, my major concern is just the fact that the grave site might be larger than what is currently marked. It might not even be in the exact correct area. So I will unmute myself now and leave that to you.
So to the applicant, do you, do you have any response or comment on that, on, on Cliff's concerns?
I don't know if Phil, you want to, I mean, I, I don't think there's any thing we can do ahead of time. And I mean, I think there's, Phil probably knows, you know, on any site, if you, if you run into certain, you know, things, whether that be remains or other things, there's, there's protocols for that. So we, we hear, we hear the concern, but I'm not sure there's, there's much to say about it. I mean, I guess the, the, the good and bad of it is the, there was significant disturbance in front of it, obviously. So we know, we, we know those aren't, aren't in front of it because there's the retaining walls there and then the field. And so it, it does limit the, the areas where it could be, but, um, but yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's much else to say. If Bill, if you have anything else to add.
I, I would add. Sorry, Bill and Phil. I would add that the personnel that would be working in this area would be brought up to speed with the potential, uh, knowing this information. And typically the way that, uh, the, the way that we work is it's an operator and a, and a spotter. So those two would work in tandem and they would, in, in making them aware of the potential, they can be on the lookout for things that might sometimes be cast aside. You know, and, and have more of a keen eye when, when working in that area so that if we do disturb it, we can identify it and then notify the proper individuals so that we can handle it in compliance with the authorities having jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Yeah, Cliff, I mean, we're going to discuss this as a topic again, that the planning board is going to discuss as we discuss the kind of concerns list and the conditions list. And I mean, with this group of professionals, I'll, I'll just say that, I, I mean, I know that this group of professionals would follow all regulations and rules around this topic. There are regulations and rules and I'm confident that they would follow those, those rules. I think that said, I, I think the planning board, you know, pending the, the discussion of the board, I think, you know, we're willing to reiterate that in our decision that, that, you know, our, our decision is contingent upon following all rules and regulations around this topic matter in, during the construction process. But, um, yeah, so.
So can I ask the applicant a follow up question now to that, or do you want me to save my question?
Um, why, why don't we, there have been people, people waiting and let's save it and then go through that in our consensus discussion. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Peter.
So our next speaker tonight will be Mr. Steve Morgan. Steve, I am unmuted.
Steve, are you there? Steve, are you there? Can you hear us? Okay, um.
All right, something happened. So I'm going to move on to Evan Root. Evan Root, I am unmuting you.
You got it.
Okay. First of all, I want to acknowledge the goodwill and work that everyone's put into this project and each, you know, many different points of view. So, um, it's a difficult thing to get together. Uh, what I wanted to, I'm from 80 Concord Street, which is very close. I can hear everything that goes on uh, over at the Men's School when it's outside. And I think I represent the people who live close to the Men's School. And I'd like to ask, I've heard 19 months, that might go to two years. I'm imagining noise, construction, this, that, and the other thing. Drifting, uh, smells from chemicals or whatever that's needed to build the building. And if some thought has been given to take care of the neighbors, so to speak. I'm also concerned about what I'll refer to as light pollution. Because when I saw the layout of all those lights just all over the place now, I thought, holy crow, there's going to be nothing left of the night sky where I live. And it's going to be noisy for two years. And when that ends, there's a ballpark back there, there's going to be loudspeakers with people announcing who's playing and who's up to bat or whatever it is. Because to its degree, we've had that so far. And believe me, it penetrates our yard as if it was somebody was talking loudly right next to me. So I wonder if there's, if anyone would like to address that. It is, it's not the problem, the school or the building. I have some questions about that, which I'll write and mail into the board. But I just want to know if some thought has been given to the quality of life for the people who lived near the school, both before and during construction and after construction, the result of that to us.
So to the applicant, could you, could you speak to this a little bit to Mr. Root's question?
Sure. Why don't I let Phil start with some of the, the things related to what to expect with construction and things like that? And, uh, and then I'll, I'll follow up and, uh, with, with some comments as well.
Thanks, Paul. So from a construction perspective, our work hours would be from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM, Monday through Friday. We would follow any of the town bylaws should we be needing weekend work. And as far as trucking goes, we're working, there'll be a written prescribed trucking route in and out of the site. Trucking would be limited to the work hours. There'd be no truck idling overnight. There'd be no truck parking overnight. Worker parking, worker parking is not permitted in the neighborhood. Worker parking be contained within the site. We'll, we'll have a, um, a site for the duration of the project while we're in construction will be protected by an eight foot tall chain link fence with scrim, screening scrim to keep, keep anybody off from trespassing off hours and to keep us isolated from the neighborhood. Our primary entrance for the 19 month duration, so the building construction will be on Fisk Road. And our trucking route will take individuals to that entrance in and out of Fisk Road. Trying to think what else we had, uh, touched on.
Phil, if you could, if you could cover the, the posting about i- if people have issues and communicating with the variety of entities that are operating.
And I was, I was going to kind of cover that after the more construction related stuff from, from Phil.
And, and Joe, I just want to jump in, uh, just let Mr. Root, Root know, Root, that the town in a project this big, the scale, right? The town has a, uh, it's under mass general law where the town has actually hire a OPM, operations of maintenance on that project. And so that person actually works for us, works for the town, representing the town, dealing with the construction crews on a day to day basis. And so if there was anything to come up that was a particular concern, obviously being a direct of butter, having communication with the OPM, who has actually been hired and has been on the last previous calls, his name is Mike Quinlan. He would be a direct person to communicate with as a direct butter, I would say. So there's many of, uh, there's, there's many people and personnel that, that are going to be working on the town's behalf to oversee the construction of the state.
Thank you. Yeah. And so just to piggyback on that, Peter, so hopefully Mr. Root, you've, you, hopefully you received a letter that we sent out a few months ago, reaching out to, what we did is we went to 300 foot of butters. So anyone who has a parcel within 300 feet of radius of the site. And hopefully you got that letter inviting you to reach out. And our goal is to make sure that we're the best neighbors we can be during the process. We know it's a construction site, so it's not like it's going to be quiet all the time or anything like that. So we, we, we want to be good neighbors. So if you haven't received that, I will, you know, please reach out to me. I, I will give you my email address and phone number. We'll, we'll put you in contact with the project team. But to what Peter's talking about, we have, we're going to have a lot of opportunities. We're going to have a lot of people on site, a lot of people overseeing this. So as he said, we have an OPM from Compass Project Management. Mike Quinlan's the project manager, but we also have a dedicated onsite person from Compass. So the Compass works for the town. They're, they represent the town here. So there are eyes and ears. If you are familiar with other processes, they'd be the clerk of the works, you know, in, in this case, right? Then we have Phil from, from Shamaat. He's the construction manager. He's a project manager from Shamaat Construction. Jonathan will be the superintendent on the site. So we'll have, you'll have lots of opportunity to reach out if there's any issues to all of us. And what I want to do is get all the, all the butters, all the people that are going to be able to see or hear anything into a communication mechanism for us so we can be in communication with you, do what to expect. There will be times during the process that will be louder than others or, or anything like that. And so we want to let you know that ahead of time. We don't want it to be a surprise. But we also want to hear if there's any issues, if we're not doing something correctly. If we're not controlling the dust, if we're not doing that, we definitely want to hear from you. So, uh, so I encourage you, if you have that letter, reach out to me. I want, I want to put you on that list. And we want to start that conversation and address any concerns you have. And, uh, and that goes from now until, you know, we're, we're, until all the, all the construction's done and, and we're open. So hopefully that answers your question. And if there's anything else that we haven't answered, by all means, you can ask now or certainly reach out to me. And we'll, I'll get the project team. We can have a, a call with you. We can walk the site with whatever, whatever is going to answer your questions.
Well, thank you. It certainly helps. And I, I'd like to get that email again. I was away for that first meeting, I think that occurred when the letter arrived. I was unable to attend it.
I, I, I'll, I'll send you out another one or drop it in your mailbox. But we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll reach out to you. I'll make sure I reach out directly to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Root. Okay, Steve, we'll continue with some public comment here.
Sure. Before we go back, I do to Mr. Morgan, I want to ask Bill Nova to step forward, please. Oh, Bill, I need to unmute yourself. I'm sorry. Blank. Oh, Bill, I need to unmute yourself. I'm sorry. Blank.
Did you do it, Peter?
Um.
He's unmuted. Bill, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
There you go, Bill. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Not, not to worry. Just sorry. Thirty-nine Lakeview Terrace. Regarding the trees to be used as the buffer a lot behind the Concord Road properties, you listed Holly's firs and white pines. Do you have a calculation as to the mix and how they will be applied? My, my concern is that if you just put in white pines in thirty years, they won't be a buffer at all. They'd be like asparagus. Second thing, that oak tree is at least three hundred years old. I mean, that's significant. And those people were buried there because of the, you know, size, regard, whatever it is, for said species. And also in regard to the white oak tree, and this may be a silly question, but if the school building was moved twenty to twenty-five feet west-northwest, it would likely alleviate a lot of the problem. How difficult is that?
So I can take the first swipe at that and then I'll let Phil and Bill. So if we were to move it in that direction, we would be significantly increasing the cut into the hill, significantly increasing the number of trees. And because of the earthwork and everything else involved in that, significantly increasing the cost. So those are the, those are the considerations as it relates to shifting it further, further north and away from the tree.
I didn't say north, I said west-northwest, which is almost due west.
Which is into the hill. So it, it, so diagonally back, right, west-northwest, north. It's into the, it's more into the hill, more trees down, more cost. Those are the considerations. And Phil or Bill, I don't know if you want to add to that.
No, no, that's not. I mean, the, the further we push that into the, this into the hillside, more excavation and more trees down reduces that amount of old growth that we were trying to save on that hillside.
I mean, I walked the property behind the current school and while it's not a plateau, where, where's the hill you're talking about?
It's, actually, it's, it will be to the west of the building. And it's, it's, so it's, so think of that's building that part of this is being kind of carved into the site. And so when you look at it now, you could see, well, kind of where's the hill? But once we get the, think about that, the floor plate, place, so it relates to the rest of the site in regards to parking and ball fields. That has to be a little bit lower. And so the area where, if you're familiar, but obviously, you know, the site plan, but we would have that circulation drive for both service and fire truck access swings up around that knoll of trees that we're trying to preserve. And it was, so we were, you know, we are, you know, trying to find that spot where we can accommodate, obviously, the size and scale of the building, work on the existing building, and then preserve as much of those existing trees as we can. Yeah, I don't know if that, is, is that helping in terms of?
It is, it is. And I, just one last thing, if you'll indulge me. In California, people move much larger live oak trees and preserve them and move them however they do it. I mean, and I would just ask that you humor Kathy Rooney and speak to her consultant, okay? Because the tree is worth saving, as is the, the site. I mean, it is a statement for the school. Thank you.
Just to touch base, you, you bring up a good point about the evergreens. And the reason why we look at that mix is that Holly's tend to go a little bit slower, white pine's a little bit faster, but we, we will kind of fine-tune that mix and, and have fewer of the white pine, knowing that we, there's a longevity here that we want to achieve in terms of the screening. But you bring up a good point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bill. Peter?
The last person would be Mr. Steve Morgan. Mr. Steve Morgan, I am unmuting you.
Hey, Steve. Did that work this time?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Oh, great. Yeah, last time it froze me up, so I don't know what went on there, but I re-entered the meeting and seems like it's working out. So I had a lot of comments, but you know, you asked me to come back in the queue, so I'll just start with the first comment. If I can share my screen.
Morgan, I go into, have to make you a co-host for you to share your screen. Okay, you are all set to share your screen.
Yes, I had a detailed discussion with Jeff from the team earlier in the week. And he seemed to understand what I was trying to show him.
Steve, we don't see your screen if, if, yet we see your face, just to let you know.
Cool. Do you see it's screen now?
No, we do not.
All right.
Now we're, now we're seeing it, yes.
All right. So, so, you know, I don't want to belabor this point, but the first point that was made tonight is that we found all the markers and everything's resolved. So I don't agree with that. This is the deed. This is the line, five hundred and sixty feet. These are the markers that were there. I discussed this, it looks pretty clear to me. I discussed it with Jeff, that these, these points on this end have been moved. Now, I can't tell you who moved them. But they're certainly not confirmed. And all the points that were shown on the chart early in the meeting were bounds that somebody put in recently. So, you know, whether those were put correctly or not, is a legitimate question of fact. And I would think people ought to be looking into that, because it does not match up. The linear feet doesn't match up. You know, I have here, copy of the deed itself, clearly five hundred and sixty feet. You know, that's the line, it's a straight line, goes to the bounds. It's not where it is now. It's not what it is on several sets of more recent plans, including your own. So I think you need to fix that and stop telling me that the boundary is in my property. The other point I want to make on this particular item is right here. I've made it before. I had this discussion with Jeff. I understand there's some interest now in putting up a privacy fence, but only to the edge of my property. People don't want to meet their obligation to the deed. You know, this was a bargain struck by the town. This is a town obligation. It's not sovereignly immune. It agreed to the deal. You know, people need to put this fence in. It needs to be on the plans and in, not like maybe we'll do the part in front of your house, but nobody else.
Okay. So, Mr. Morgan, so if, if, if putting the fence further behind your property would involve cutting down additional trees to do so, don't know if that would require it. Is that what you would, would want?
I'm, I'm not interested in taking down trees, but you know, fences go around trees all the time. You know, I come down Myrtle Street from Route Nine, and there's a fence going right around a tree, right there along the side road, before you hit Myrtle, on Badger Road. So people can easily go around a tree without cutting it down. So, so again, you know, just making the point, it's not yet on the plans, even what was discussed earlier on, I guess it was Tuesday, may not be correctly on the plans yet, but you know, you know, just because I talked to you doesn't change the fact the town has an obligation. You know, town should do what it agreed to do. And, you know, it hasn't been doing it. That's why there's no fence there now. And that's why we're having some of this conversation. So, you know, this is a, this is a legitimate deed. It says what the bargain was. And, you know, the town should just meet its obligation. So that, that, that's the first point. I'd like the fence and the bounds put in the right place. And I'd like somebody to either go figure out who moved the bounds or figure out why it doesn't match the deed, because showing me bounds from a few years ago that somebody replaced doesn't answer the question when it doesn't match the deed. And there's clearly a difference. It's, you know, probably about five to eight feet, depending on where you are. And it's pretty easy on a five hundred and sixty-foot-long straight line, basic geometry, to move a line, you know, that number of feet, okay? I don't think it's that complicated. Not a surveyor, but you know, it's basic geometry. You know, when the line moves up on one end, it's going to move the whole distance. Doesn't have to move far when it's a line that long. So, so that's just that, that's my first comment. My second comment, which, you know, I, I am concerned significantly about, and I brought up indirectly, but I'll bring it up specifically on this point, is about the historic and scenic road. And, you know, I have emailed the scenic, scenic commission. I think they should have a hearing on this. The comment was made earlier that people don't know about the cemetery. Well, you know, in the time I've been sitting here, you know, not a lawyer, but you look up chapter two seventy-two, section seventy-three, and it's a five-year imprisonment for interfering with a cemetery. Okay, that includes cutting down trees. You know, it's not complicated. It's not allowed at all. Now, whether you decide that the cemetery is at the edge of the fence, or you do the right thing and you understand that the cemetery includes, you know, a reasonable setback from the fence, and it's much bigger than you show on your prints, I think what you've shown is insufficient. And, you know, people need to meet their obligations here, instead of trying to squeeze a building where it doesn't belong. There are easy ways to modify this design to not get into a cemetery. And I'd like to see that cemetery and that tree preserved. I'd like to, I'd like people to understand that that is a historic road that we live on and that that's part of the historic road. And, you know, it needs to be reviewed and it needs to be treated seriously. I was very disappointed to hear some of the questioning with one of the members, where the, where the experts couldn't even acknowledge that that tree was significant. It's clearly inside the fence, clearly can't be touched. And, you know, the edge of that cemetery should be well outside that fence, so that there is no possibility that that tree comes down or that that, that burial is interfered with. It's very simple. If it's too close and there's a fifty-fifty chance, you're too close. Move the building, designate the cemetery at an appropriate size. It's very simple in my mind. So I don't want to talk about that more, but I, that's what I'm expecting you to do. I also would like to point out, as a historic item, that, you know, that is, in my view, an Article ninety-seven-protected parkland. And, you know, I've told you that before, and I haven't seen anybody take any step to have that reviewed. I've talked to my attorney. And, you know, he's got cases in Massachusetts active right now on the same issue. And so the planning board can either ignore it, or the, or the planning board can ask the town to go get a ruling in its favor. And it should, because that's a protected park. It's been a park for a long time. It's on a historic road, it was dedicated. You know, so we should stop pretending we don't agree with things. We should go get a decision. And we should stop pretending we don't have a park just because we took a sign down. You know, that's, that's my opinion. And, you know, I don't mind the park, but I certainly don't want lights and everything else. I don't think the screening is adequate. I think that the six feet that are required by zoning is a, is a minimum. That's a minimum. You know, in other areas of town, we have a hundred feet. Okay, this plan that's currently in front of me looks a little better. I appreciate that it looks a little better. But that, that swale reduces the flow of that stream. You know, I had a hearing, there was a hearing on Monday with conservation. And on Monday, they said, well, if it's not on the GIS plan, it doesn't exist. And, you know, the GIS is used by the state, so it doesn't exist. So I called the GIS, and I called the person up in Maine who's responsible, who I then put me in touch with the person who's responsible, and I was told it does exist, then we'll put it on the plane in September, because they have photographs of it. They have aerial photography of it. And the fact that our conservation commission or this commission may not know how to go talk to people, or all these professionals don't know how to go find these people, took me half a day to find all the people involved and have them show me aerial photography. And know that that stream is there. It's been there the whole time. It's part of it, it's part of a watershed. And, you know, the current plans starve that stream of water. And so I don't want to bring that in. It's primarily a conservation issue, but there's a stormwater plan. And, you know, people are bringing this, you know, back behind my house on my property line. And, you know, I'm not in favor of that. I think that people need to get back further. And they need to, you know, put more vegetation in there, and they need to treat our neighborhood the same as they've treated other neighborhoods, like they did over at Villages of America. Just because it's a six-foot minimum does not mean you do six feet and you squeeze everything you can onto the site. So that's my feedback on that. I took my, I took my couple of points, so I'll come back if anyone else wants to speak. I have other things to bring up.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you. And the next person up is going to be Mark Terry. Mark Terry, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Thank you. My name is Mark Terry, live at, live in the Rain Drive. I'm also a member of the school committee, but I'm not speaking on behalf of me with my comments. I just want to take an opportunity to to speak in favor of the application as presented. You know, I do appreciate the concerns, the genuine concerns that a lot of people have raised. Whether it's concerns about boundaries or the trees or other things. I think that it's ultimately, anytime you do a project this big, there are compromises. And somebody else made that point earlier. I think the, the school building committee has worked exceptionally hard to try to find a project that suits the, the town's needs, the school's department's needs. And is looking to develop a building that is, that's already and put it in a property the town already owns to do what it can to minimize the impact on the community. And, you know, personally, I have a lot of confidence in the team that it's looked at all the different options that are out there. And is presenting the one that is at least intrusive while still accomplishing needs of the project. You know, this isn't, this isn't the same kind of situation where you've got somebody looking to come in and build a for-profit project. Where you're looking to cut corners or do things like that, because you're not looking to line your pockets. It's a public project. It's for the community. And, you know, having, had the opportunity to work with Mr. Kendall for many years on the school committee, I'm knowing the efforts that he and the whole school building committee have taken to engage the community, to, to look for buy-in. You know, quite frankly, the fact that we passed an override, that exclusion to support this project, I think demonstrates it really was a project that looked to engage the community and address the community's interests. So, you know, I'm not, I, I don't know that I would claim to be the tree hugger that Matt tries to be. But I'm not one to either dismiss them either. You, in a few weeks here, and they all start changing colors, my family would be sick of hearing me talk about it. Look at that one. So, you know, I really do appreciate the concerns that are being raised. But on balance, it seems to me that, that moving the building to another location on the site either so is going to have a more substantial detrimental impact in terms of loss of other trees. So ultimately, you know, I really think that I'd like to see the planning board support the project as it's presented. Sounds like the team is making consolid, considerations to the, to some of the items like the sign. They've tried to find things that address the concerns of the community that have been raised before. And as a last comment, I would agree absolutely with Mr. Crowe that cutting parking in any way, shape, or form is a really a really bad idea. You know, everybody who's had kids and tried to go to an event at any one of our schools knows how tight parking is. And, you know, the, the net result, as Mr. Crowe pointed out, is if we don't have the parking on the site, people are going to be parking on Concord Street, they'll be parking on Fisk and creating other safety hazards. So ask the planning board, please consider granting the application as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So I just want to acknowledge, it's about nine thirteen. Do you think that we want to have a substantive discussion here as a board to discuss what we've heard and build consensus? So I would like to close up the public comment portion of this meeting here now. So I guess for the two that have their hands raised, those will be the final questions. And if you could, please keep your questions or comments succinct and to the point, so we can move towards the next phase.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I will all now call Mr. Mark DeSoni back.
Okay, thank you. This is just a basic question I ask every time with, after a, a good meeting. Through the chair and through the the building chair, what's the next steps? That's it.
So, so from the planning board's perspective, Mark, once we close the public, once we finish the public discussion portion of the meeting here shortly, the planning board is going to kind of identify the, the items or the issues that we want to continue to discuss here and try to build consensus around those issues broadly. Looking to see if there's consensus towards drafting a decision with conditions for our next meeting. At which time we would, we would, you know, call the question and potentially vote on it. That's if the consensus of the board is that we want to move in that direction. There are outstanding issues that the majority of the board want to continue to discuss and pursue. I think, you know, that remains to be seen. I think we're going to find out in a little bit as we begin to identify issues and discuss those as a group. We've heard a lot, uh, both in the public and from the applicant. Um, so that's the next steps from, from our side. Does that answer your question reasonably well? Sorry, Mark, you're on mute. Mark. Mark, you're on mute.
Okay. If I wanted to ask Paul that same question.
Okay, uh, to the applicant, um, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll try to keep it brief, uh, because I know it's kind of outside of the, the scope here, but uh, so once uh, the conclusion of planning board and conservation, we will then be moving into uh, applying for a building permit. And that will happen, you know, presumably if we can wrap these things up uh, in September, and we'll be mobilized and break ground in October. Uh, and that, that probably is the, the crux of what you're asking, I'm assuming, Mark.
Okay. We've got the thumbs up for Mark, so I think we are good. So on to our last um public comment.
Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Steve Morgan to unmute, so.
Sure. So thanks for letting me speak on the project again. Um, just the additional comments I wanted to address. Um, first off, the six-foot fence doesn't help me at all going over my deck. Okay? My deck is much higher than the, the property level at that point. And so it's the trees that help me mostly with the, the screening. I'm not in favor of evergreen trees. It's not native to the area. Um, I think we should be using native trees and sufficient number of them um, as opposed to um, non-native trees. And, you know, lacking the necessary undercover and such to make that work, or, or squeezing it into six feet when it could be longer. Uh, so I think that should be relooked at. Um, as far as um the parking that came up, I made comments on the traffic study. Um, I have not getting any feedback on the traffic study. That's in front of this board. Traffic study was eighty-three parking spaces. I don't understand how you can be looking at a project which claims to only need eighty, eighty-three parking cars and have two hundred and seventy-two spaces. So that parking study and all of my comments never got addressed, and I think it needs to be revised and resubmitted. So it's clearly not time to close the public comment or the review if people haven't revised the documents.
Just Steve, I mean, I think to respond to that, I think the board has received input from a number of folks in the public safety side of, of town. And um, they have expressed support for um the parking and the overall traffic configuration as designed. They were involved in the process. They've had input. Um, ultimately, it's landed where it is based on their input and discussion and, you know, we have support from people within public safety within the town. So I think that's.
I, I appreciate that, Joe, and I have a, a complaint filed for the open meeting law against those people who had those meetings without posting them. So, uh, please appreciate that the traffic study includes calculated data on trips made and people out on Concourse Street and the methodology. And the input, if the input was eighty-three cars and the real car is a seven, two seventy-two, then that study is useless. And so, you know, you should have a study, even if you want two hundred and seventy-two spaces, then you should have a study that shows that the twenty, two hundred and seventy-two spaces don't impact the traffic. It's not what you have right now. So all I'm saying is, I'd like my comments addressed as submitted. It's been weeks now since they were submitted. I haven't seen a revised traffic study that matches the design. It's all I'm asking for before you start closing public hearings. People are going to override and want all that parking. They need, need to show that it doesn't impact the traffic. Because if you have parking, you'll have cars. That's obviously the purpose of the traffic study. Um, so that's all I'm saying, Joe. I'm not trying to argue the number of cars. I think it's way too big. I think you probably need a hundred and fifty spaces based on what people have said in these meetings, but that's, you know, that's up to someone else to calculate, right? Um, as far as the um, sign, um, I appreciate the sign being moved back. I think it's better moved back. Um, you know, I think it needs to move further back. Needs to be on the property over by the school, over by the driveway, over by the traffic flow, away from Concourse Street. Because, you know, if there's going to be, you know, people looking at some educational purpose for that sign, which is what the law requires, is case law. If that sign doesn't have an educational purpose, it shouldn't be there. It should follow zoning. And I don't support the big sign. They can't even maintain the sign they have right now, which is a small wooden sign. And the idea that they're going to maintain an electronic sign when they can't take care of the existing basic wooden sign, doesn't make any sense to me. You know, um, there's no excuse for the poor maintenance of that building um, other than people in the school department, you know, and leadership in the school department don't get the work done. And that's my opinion. Um, I appreciate that they're educating kids, but, you know, I don't need a big electronic sign out there that, you know, five years from now is not looking too good, and it certainly serves the same purpose over by the school away from the roadway. So that's my comment on the sign. Think it should meet the code. I think it should be as required. And the Dover amendment doesn't give them any special exception unless there's an educational purpose. Um, as far as the trees, I agree. And I already commented on the old tree. I won't comment on that again. I think you need to fix that gravesite. It needs to be sufficiently big not to dig anyone up. Okay? Um, as far as the stream, um, you know, I think you're drying out that stream as designed on the plan, on this, as per the site plan. You know, right now you have underfield drainage, which we finally dug up and found out about that I told them about back in March and they ignored. And now that we know it's there, the new drainage plans for that site move all the water only from the incoming source at the wetlands to the north. It does not bring any of the field water or any of the other water that's in the field now in the stream, and it's going to starve that stream. So that's primarily an issue for conservation, but it's also an issue for this board because, you know, you need to make sure that that stream is not impacted by this project. And um that brings me to um the end of my current comments, other than to say that I do want answers to my comments. And, you know, I appreciate people making presentations. But um, you know, if we're not going to get answers to comments, you know, I'm not sure what the proper path is. I mean, I can bring and share the screens with my comments and we can go through them in the meeting, but the idea that you want to close public hearing when nobody's revised the report and nobody's given the comments any answer yet, I think, I think is very um inappropriate. So if, if you want to, to book the time to go answer those questions with the applicant, um, I'm waiting for you to tell me the process, but I was very disheartened to hear you say you want to close the hearing and that you want to kind of finish it off for the next, the next meeting. I don't think you're anywhere near that point in time. And um, I haven't seen a single comment. I did, as I acknowledged, have a good conversation. At least somebody finally talked to the neighbors in my case. But, you know, until, until I actually see some result, it's just talk, right? So it's nice that people are at least talking now, because nobody was talking at all until I reached out to Jeff. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. So Margie, I see you have your hand raised. Um, we, we were trying to end public comment with Mr. Morgan. Um, if you have a very, very quick question, go ahead, but otherwise, we, we're going to move on.
Um, Margie Gassell, eight Adams Road, and I do have a quick question. I think I missed what you said about closing the public comment period, and I would like to submit something in writing um tomorrow or maybe by Monday. Is that still allowed?
Uh, I, I mean, you can send something to the planning department um, with comments and writing if that's what you would like to do. Um, we are um, you know, we're, we're concluding the portion of this meeting, which includes public commentary. The board is going to discuss issues, identify issues, and begin to see where we are in terms of the, in terms of this, this application. Um, and depending on the, the consensus of the board, we, you know, we possibly will move towards drafting uh, just a decision with conditions for the next meeting will depend upon where the board is on this. So um is that answer your question, Margie?
Um, the, the answer is that I can send comments to the planning department, but not to the planning board?
Sending comments to the planning department, uh, everything that gets sent to the planning department is shared with the planning board members.
Okay, thank you.
Margie, you can send, Margie, this is Peter, Magic Town Planner. You can send me an email directly and I'll make sure it gets forwarded out to the planning board members.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Margie. Okay. Um, thank you to everyone who participated and provided comment this portion of the meeting. Um, so to.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may, um, I, I, I wasn't going to, but it, it's now that, I believe, the third time it's been stated that we have not reached out at all.
Okay, if you'd like to respond.
Yeah, so I'm going to share two things. So this is a letter sent, and you can see the date here, April twenty-eighth. This is a letter I shared and I, I sent out to all butters within a three-hundred-foot radius of the project. Here is receipts of all of the letters that was sent, including Mr. Morgan. I can just say that he has not engaged the project in any way, shape or form until it's been for this board or conservation. So just to address the idea that the building committee in this project was not actively seeking input and engaging in responding to comments, it's patently just false. And I can let it go for a certain amount of time, but I do not want that to be the narrative that people hear. It is uh, just incorrect. And uh, so I appreciate you giving me time to, to just set that record straight.
Um, Steve, you've got your hand raised. I, 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 I don't, I mean, that, that was a statement of fact. Those are letters are certified, so I, I'm not sure what, what further comment we can do with that at this point. So, um, I'd like to move on with the planning board and begin identifying our issues listing here. Are you all still there and awake?
I am here.
Good. All right, just a little humor. Um, okay, so um as chair of this meeting, I'm going to identify kind of issues that that I heard, that, that I've heard raised between the last meeting and this meeting, okay? And, and by, my list is by no means the authoritative list. It's just me chairing this meeting and trying to lay out issues and begin to discuss those issues, right? So um I, we can do this a couple of ways. I can lay out the issues as I have them identified. And then if members see other issues, we can add to that list and then kind of work through those. Is that a reasonable way to move forward?
Um, uh, one question, um, Joe, are we going to officially close the, the public hearing at this point so that we can discuss amongst, I mean, discuss? Or are we just going to announce that we will not be taking public comments during this part so that we can discuss the issue amongst the planning board?
I mean, Peter, do you have counsel or commentary here on that?
If, if I could, I do have some additional questions for the applicant that I think will come up as we discuss. So I just want to be, be clear that.
I, I think that is still allowed, Anna, that you're free to ask a question, but it's a matter of having that this is now our meeting for our discussion of the topic. Um, and that the public comment, the applicant, or the public comment.
Yeah, I think we can just state that, obviously, uh, we've heard, we've taken time, we've heard from the public comment. Uh, and so I think from this point moving forward, for anybody listening or tuning in, uh, no public, uh, no more public comment will be taken tonight uh, as the planning board begins discussion.
But it does not preclude, just to clarify, it does not preclude a public member of the public commenting at our next meeting.
Correct. Yep. No, we are not closing the public meeting. We are not closing the public hearing. We are just stating that.
In this meeting.
Correct. Yep.
So there could be, there could be future public meetings on this topic if that's what the board does.
Correct.
If, if that's the, the consensus in direction of the board. There will be at least right, depending where we end up tonight, the next time we're going to talk about this is August twenty-sixth.
If, if we don't decide to close the public hearing later in the meeting.
It's correct.
Which we may, depending on our discussion.
Correct. So Joe, do you want to lead us off and identify the, your issues?
Okay. Again, not the authoritative list of issues, just my effort at organizing thoughts here. So I think um with regard to um so issues, so um there, there has been um, a, a lot of, a number of, a lot of commentary from Mr. Morgan as a director butter to the site. Um, he had voiced concerns with regard to the buffering and the um, you know, um, the, the buffering uh, along the edge of his property versus these would be the school property. I think um, the applicant has shown us additional plans, which would be in our final approved plans with additional plantings um, and with a fence. Um, I think um, as an issue, I think that they have attempted to respond to um, uh, the, the, the commentary there. Um, I think we would, we would, you know, as, as in it, so that's one issue, right? And, and to what extent we want to put anything in the conditions uh, of the decision around that, dictating that it's a wooden fence and it's at the butter's discretion to communicate with the building committee on their preferences on that fence, but that we would expect that to be part of the, the final plan. So the fence, the butter concerns. So another issue, um, water and stormwater on the site. So um we saw presentation information tonight on that topic. I think, you know, where does the, what's the consensus of the board around that topic? Um, do we have further things we, we think we are in our purview to explore or in a place where we think we condition our decision on conservation commission's approval at this point in time? So that's the second issue. Uh, third issue is the sign, the electronic sign and placement. Um, obviously, a proposed new location. Um, uh, proposed, a proposed additional setback by the applicant was discussed tonight. So where are we on that sign and what's the consensus of the board around that? Um, based on what's the proposal is at this point. Um, I think the tree in the memorial site is um, is another issue to discuss here. We've heard quite a bit about it. It seemed presented, but what is the board feel, what is the board's feeling about that and, and where, where is consensus around around the tree and, and whether it should come down or, or, or alternative approaches? Uh, lastly is parking. Um, there has been quite a bit of commentary on parking. Um, we have heard from public safety folks. Um, you know, where, where is the board on the parking issue? Because at the end of the day, there are two waivers that they've been, been requested here as this application. First waiver is with regard to the part, with regard to the parking and the medians in the parking lot. And the second item is the electronic fence, uh, excuse me, the electronic sign. So that, that is, uh, is another waiver that's being requested. So I think we need to be very clear on those. So what else, what other issues do this, does the board see beyond what I've raised? And I, and I will, will take notes and according.
And Joe, this could just be like a definition or word issue, but I know the applicant in the application did have um a permitting issue relative to the steep slope. So I don't know if that is included in the water, stormwater category that you mentioned, but I just want to make sure that we reference the application as much as we can for the public, and that we do address the, the, the steeps, the review of um, the site plan relative to the steep slopes, right? The disruption of the steep slope is within our jurisdiction relative to the application. So.
Yeah, and uh, Peter, regarding the water and stormwater drain and the steam, steep slope that Anna wore, what is the planning boards um responsibly or what, what, like, what decisions can we make around this? Because I remember, I just heard Trish say that this comes under the E, um, EPA and uh, conservation board, right? So it's not uh, fully our response, our, it's not under our jurisdiction, right?
Before we jump into like discussion, can I add one more topic to our list? Sure. Um, and that would be, uh, just in general, I know you're talking, Joe, about potential conditions and I, and I do want to bring up the solar panels as it the least important on the, in this, on this list as far as like the urgency of what's come up today, but I do want to talk about the solar panels at some point as a condition.
And you're speaking about the potential solar panels over the
Correct.
over the parking.
To discuss what, no, not over the parking, the solar panels that are present on the various renders.
On the roof.
On the roof, and whether we want to consider that as a potential condition to assure that that actually happens within a certain timeframe.
I'm not sure. We can, we can talk about that. I'm not sure that's actually possible. That would be asking for a certain type of funding that I don't think the, you know, Peter can weigh in, but it would be asking for funding that the planning board doesn't have. have the power to ask for in in my understanding.
All I'm saying is let's add it to the topic list and.
Can add it to the topic list, um, but it might be, it might be an easy answer from Peter.
And I'm not requesting that we force them to go up relative to funding, but that we can discuss this topic and what we could do.
Okay, so, okay, so do you have other topics to add? Uh, so if so, let, no.
That's it.
So why don't, why don't we um, why don't we talk about the solar panels now and and Peter? Uh, Anna, maybe give a quick another description there. And Peter, why don't we, why don't we do that?
Sure, I I I guess the, the issue is that they are on the three dimensional renderings that are within the school, right? They've been seen by the public. Um, they've been on the various drawings that were at the special town meeting in January of twenty twenty one. Um, this is a um, a school that's prepared to accept them. And so we trust and um, respect the experts and the public officials who participated in making sure that this building is ready for that. And we certainly hope that the same leadership that's here uh, involved in this process will be here for a long time to assure that that actually happens. But I think we, we as a planning board have a right with with any development. Um, when something is promised like this to the public to assure that some, something happens in a process to move that forward. I understand we can't force that funding to happen, but I think we, we can find a mechanism by which um, the public is assured that this promise is in fact met. Um, within a certain timeframe, whether it means we ask the applicant to come back and report on this within a certain amount of time. Um, or we ask that the applicant actually make certain um, steps towards retaining funding by a certain time. We can guarantee funding, but I think we can ask for effort to make that happen. And I believe performance of things is part of the site plan review, um, jurisdiction of board.
Peter, can you weigh in on that?
I, yes, I can. Uh, so I, my first question is obviously is does the project have funding for solar? Definitely do talk about solar and.
Let's Paul, let let's let Paul answer.
Yeah, so I I have a couple of uh, responses to that. So A, A solar is not part of the budget. Uh, so it it, the MSB, and so I can explain the reasoning behind that, right? So we're, we're designing this building, we're designing it to accept the solar panels. Um, but the funding mechanism and the partnership with the MSBA would, they would never participate in that. So it would be one hundred percent our dollars. And we have a sustainability coordinator and sustainability committee, and we have other initiatives uh in town. And so it's always been that we would get a better value by combining those efforts at whatever point. Uh, that makes sense for the town. Um, the other, the other point I just want to make is my scope and the scope and purview of the building committee is very limited. Um, we are essentially uh, there as fiduciaries for this project. Uh, we oversee, we uh, the consultants and make directions, approve the financing, approve the invoices. We have no jurisdiction in any way, shape or form to try to influence future or uh, things. So our our scope is very limited. So I just want to throw that out there, that whatever you put as a, as a, as a committee, we can't do anything outside of the purview of this project in particular. So just uh, to share that.
If I could clarify, the applicant is the town manager, right?
The applicant is the town of Ashland.
Right.
The the town manager is the signing authority for the town.
Correct. So in theory, the signing authority could indicate, hey, on behalf of the applicant, we're going to make an effort to obtain funding within a certain amount of time. Not get the funding, but make an effort to obtain funding.
Yeah, I, just from my standpoint, yes, I think, you know, the town all, number one, all buildings to me, oh, Ashley, number one is a stretch good community, right? And by the letter of the law, the building code, this building has to be solar ready. And so this building has to be designed and built to accept solar either today on day one and or within the future. So that is by the letter of the law with the building code. I think, yes, we can put a condition that the town of Ashland, um, through certain amenities shall pro, you know, through a you know, through a strong effort to can, you know, to adopt solar. And I think with the development of 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 having a sustainability coordinator, having a net zero uh, goals. I think it is uh, a goal of the community to have solar on this this property. And 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 I would actually throw in, in a, I think it's a goal of the community to add charging stations at all public locations. You know, we just had uh, start charging stations added to the community center, which was, which uh, which we were able to do through our sustainability manager's effort regarding, you know, getting grants through ever source. Uh, and so all those elements will be taken into consideration, I would say.
And 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 if I may, the, so the, the, the project is also ready for that as well. The um, the parking island uh, to the east uh, in the parking lot, I believe is where it will be run to. But there will be an electrical conduit there in preparation for uh, if the town wants to add uh, charging stations. Those are not part of the project, but again, the the project is uh, looking forward to that and uh, putting in infrastructure so it can support it.
And I foregressed that we can, we don't have any guarantee of funding. I get that. And and I don't think we're in a position to force funding, right? We're not magicians. Um, what I'm suggesting is that the public voted upon something that was presented with solar panels. And we should do what we can to ensure that that happens. And although I I trust the folks on this call who have described themselves as tree huggers and and have worked really hard to make this a lead certified sustainable project. Um, we're making a lot of assumptions that these exact same folks will be involved uh, for long enough to actually make sure this happens. And I think we need to, we, writing something here should consider making sure that we respect the public's vote. A lot of people wrote in wanting, wanting to say that they voted for the project as is. Um, and those so- solar panels are all over the place. Um, and we should do what we can to make sure they happen within a reasonable amount of time.
If if I may, Mr. Chair, just to address, uh, I I vehemently disagree with the categorization that they were promised solar panels. If you look at all of our presentations, including animation of the flyover. Every time we discuss solar panels, it's on the sustainability slide, what net zero ready means and the solar panels are not there. Every single slide where we reference solar panels, we have said they are not part of the funding. That everything I said at the beginning is what we've promised right through. So to say it's misspent, misrepresented in any way, shape or form is patently false.
I also think that, you know, while I'm the first person to support so- solar panels, we have them on our previous house, we paid for them, we put them up. I was chair of the sustainability committee at the time, where unfortunately they don't work on the house we have now. Um, that it just does not seem appropriate to me to write some kind of responsibility for, for who? For this, is it for us? The planning board must find funding, the select board must find funding. We, the building committee can't do that because it's not a part of their purview. We're going to put it on Michael Herbert. It's, it seems great that we could hold someone accountable to this, but I think we need, since we are actually the ones paying the bill. It's a little tough to say we need to put this in the funding or to find funding for this, which will likely come from the exact same residents that are already funding the school. And this hasn't been worked into those numbers to, to add more to um, to their bill over the next few years. So while I think that everyone will be wanting these panels, we will be working hard when the time is right to get them. Whether that's at a close time period or whether it's some, some years down the road. It's just not something I think we can write into our conditions to demand of someone, some unnamed someone, that they will put forth this effort to find this funding. And I'm especially hesitant to put it on the residents of Ashland who already have agreed to support and were were very enthusiastic about supporting the school. So it's not a condition I would want to add in.
And I want to be clear, I'm not demanding that we, that we force a, a funding performance. I'm not saying that we must force this applicant to fund funding, to actually secure funding. I'm saying that we can make an effort based on the application and how it was presented to the public, that we asked the applicant to make an effort within a reasonable amount of time to try to secure funding, not actually get it. We're not going to penalize applicant for not getting it. But give a reasonable effort. The applicant, as I understand, is the town of Ashland and.
Who is who, who, who's, whose name?
Right on the applicant, it's right on the application. So we're asking the applicant to make an effort within a reasonable amount of time.
Right, but we are the town of Ashland. We are the town of Ashland, you and me and all of us.
And we've voted for, we voted for um, something that is ready for solar. We're not against solar from what I'm hearing.
No.
Why are you, we're going to get something ready for solar.
Why are we afraid to to uh, create a performance plan for ourselves then? What's the fear here?
It's just, it's just too abstract. And I think I get your idea. I understand your passion for it. Like I said, I'm I have taught sustainability classes, I have taught how solar panels work. But in this context, trying to add them in as a condition, this kind of abstract condition um, asking an unknown person or persons, unknown committee or committees to take this on. And then who is the enforcement mechanism by and and evaluating if if someone has put forth this effort, it just doesn't, I I just don't see how how this works. I'd be happy to uh, hear from some other members of the committee and see how see how they feel, but I I can't picture how this kind of thing, how this works.
I kind of agree with what you just said, but Paul, I was just curious. So I'm assuming from this conversation that when we're looking at lead certification, photo, photo takes was not part of the credits that we were looking at?
A- absolutely. So uh, as design, the um this, the, this actually exceeds, uh, when you can bring up the slide. Uh, as its model exceeds the typical MSBA uh, specifications by twenty six percent, which would require uh, lead so, uh, lead silver uh, or any chips. Uh, so that's without solar, so that that's our, um, all of our lead points or credits uh, towards both our reimbursement rate and and overall uh, uh, does not include solar.
So without photovoltaics itself, we will exceed or kind of be at that lead silver versus certification level. But when we do add photovoltaics, it kind of improves those points. Is that what we are saying?
I'm not sure we ever calculated it with solar.
Okay.
Uh, you know, so we we are kind of just focusing on what we, what we were doing, but it it exceeds. Uh, the model exceeds the lead silver by twenty six percent.
So the basic building itself is designed to be energy efficient with the, all your mechanical systems without photovoltaics. It's going to be in addition to uh, it, if it's going to help and if that town can afford to really add photovoltaics in this situation.
Yeah, yeah. So this, and 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 the generation portion, the photovoltaics is always the last step, right? Uh, the first step is how you oriented it, how do you insulate it, how do you do, how do you make things efficient, how do you use things smartly? Um, and 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 we've had, uh, I I'll probably say maybe the best consultant in the nation uh, as part of this project from the, from the get go, uh, he's involved in in writing a lot of the standards. So sure, that's how we got to here with a lot of coordination with with the designer. And it and it goes to the the window shades, the orientation, how how they use the light. Uh, for instance, in our, in our gym, we, how they diffuse, control the light. We're expecting not to actually even have lights on in the gym uh, during the day. So um, things like that. So it's, it's all those other things prior to, that's all the net zero ready. And then the the generation component comes on afterwards.
Um, just last question. So is this lead four point one that we are trying to target?
I can't say Bill, Beatrice, I I'm, I'm assuming it's the latest one that Chris was using, but I can't say that. I know that for a fact.
Okay, thank you.
Um, quick question. So in the high school, did we have the son of a solar house or parking lot? That wasn't initially designed with the building or did we get it later?
Yeah, luckily, it it was later.
Right, so can we do something, or maybe uh, to address Anna's question? Could we do something where we could add it on later? We have a parking lot. It's not covered now, maybe for future, in the future, maybe, and it, I just ask question.
It'll be ready for that. Yes, that's what Paul's saying. I mean, we're designing. Yeah.
Yeah, a- and also the parking, parking lot will be ready. So where, where the, the geothermal wells are and all those things uh, are going to be taken into account so that uh, we can put the, the footings in for the, the canopies and things like that. If, if, if the board wants to look more at it, I can show you the slides from, from the town meeting that that describes what the impact of adding those are. But uh, but again, I, Dirk, they're kind of outside of the application, obviously.
And a gym, and so Jim Adams, a gym, uh, how do we get the funding for that then after afterwards for the high school? Where did that funding come from for that?
It was a, it was a larger um, discussion within the community to have uh, solar uh, power, not only at the high school, but in other areas in the energy, in a global energy efficiency uh, audit that occurred within the town. So then the town had to secure the funding through bonding in order to do this over a number of years.
Oh.
I was, I was actually, I was actually on the sustainability committee at the time. It was part, the, the solar panels at both on top of the middle school and at the high school were part of a much larger package. Um, that I believe um, the sustainability put together, and I believe we needed to go through a town meeting as well. So it was, it was, it was a part of a larger effort and um, and it was led uh, in that case by the sustainability committee. Um, but um, but the money was, but you know, came from elsewhere, so.
Yeah, um, so then can we add this as a recommendation that needs to be considered by sustainable company in the future? And so sort of address Anna's piece too, right? I I'm just making a suggestion.
We, we, I think we could put in aspirational condition that we would say, we, you know, we would hope that the town would make best efforts to add photovoltaic to the roof of the building and the parking lot in the future, but it's, it's a non-binding thing. It's an aspirational statement in the decision. I think that's what it would equate to. Right?
I I could, I could support that. I just, I just cannot support pinning someone to this responsibility. Uh, that just doesn't make sense to me, nor do I feel it's appropriate, right?
I mean, I think, listen, I, 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 I'm comfortable with, with starting with something. I, I think if this was a private developer promising us uh, this type of building, we would, we would seek performance. I I understand that because we're paying for it, we're hesitant, but that's us, right? That's on us as members of the public to make this happen in a public asset. So I'm not afraid of it. I I would be comfortable putting that condition on myself to make it happen and pay for it. I I'm not forcing anybody to pay for it. I think that this is incredible building with those solar panels on them. Um, I think that these were visuals presented to the public and we, we can do better. But if all we can do is aspiration, I'm all there. Let's be aspirational and hopeful.
Joe, do we want to take a basic vote about each of these conditions so that Peter knows what to wrap into?
Yeah, and and like, I, I don't think we need to do like a vote, five oh, you know, whatever, but I just think if we kind of do a round robin. So I think the question to the group is, uh, we can just go around and just indicate, right? Yes or no, would, do we support the, would the, would the committee members support? Um, the planning board members support an aspirational statement regarding uh, the addition of photovoltaic um, in line with the, you know, the renderings that were shown to the community.
Yeah, I think the rendering, it was on the roof, right? It was on, not on a parking lot, like any other mean, so any other means. It doesn't have to be the rendering, but somehow that the solar panel, right?
Yeah, so, so yes, lax me, that's a yes?
Yes, it's an S.
Okay.
Yes. No, it's fine. I I think ob- obviously, yes, I'm all for aspirational hopes and wishes.
All right, so we would, we would want to put, we would want to put, we would want to entertain that as a condition, Peter, as an aspirational condition.
Clearly heard and I uh, took notes.
Um, which one do we want to touch next?
Yeah, so Joe, can we uh, get some um, input onto what are um responsibilities over the stormwater drain and stuff like that? Do we have a lot of uh, um, what do you call, a lot of leaving, making calls on those? Or is that something that another committee needs to? What do you call, a lot of leaving, making calls on those or is that something that another committee needs to concern, not us?
Me?
Do you want to, I mean, I, I say to the various bylaws earlier.
Yeah, that's why you state, that's why I'm making sure that.
Yeah, they, they all three very clearly again and again and again, and in detail. Spell out the conservation commission's responsibility. For, for wetlands protection, for stormwater management, both at the local level. And at the EPA pollution level. So while our zoning may mention. May mention water, they may mention stormwater or it's. You know, this is really in someone else's court. We don't even have someone on our board. Who's familiar with stormwater. I deal with it in my job, but I hire a civil engineer.
And we, and we as a planning board had a peer review of the proposed plans, which included all the stormwater details. The peer review raised questions on that and we, and there will be a response to those questions that the peer reviewer raised. And we will have those responses in, in our next meeting. So. I agree with Tricia with regard to that, like I think between the peer review. And making sure that, that are the peer review comments are addressed by the applicant. My mindset is that we, we condition our decision here. On conservation commission's approval of the plan.
Yeah, I, I was, I was thinking you want to be on our conditions, but yeah, we can put that, yeah. Our condition is that it needs to be approved by the conservation. Okay, agreed.
Yeah, and, and just not to, to continue on this point, but latch me. So. The applicant did submit a revised plan. I dropped my pen. So yeah, the, the applicant did submit a revised plan. They revived, they also sent back comments. Those comments have gone over to our third party consultant, GCG, who I always talk about. These guys are actually people. And they review, they have been reviewing the stormwater and civil plans for the town of Ashland for twenty years. And so the ball right now is in their court. They're going through the site plan. But once their comments come back, it will go back and forth. Their consult, the applicants, engineers from niche engineers have been CC'd to the email. And then so all this stuff will get figured out. And also please know that. This report that's being done by our third party consultants is also being shared with the conservation commission, I would say. All right. All right.
So, so before we shift forward, so, so I guess Anna and Deepa, how do you feel about the stormwater and, and where we're at with that? Whoever's like to go.
I trust the peer review and I would go by that.
And I'm, I, I, Mike, I guess I'm only, I'm going to respond to the comment that we're making this contingent upon the conservation. Commission's approval. Yes, that I a hundred percent agree with. The one thing I'll say is there are elements of that. Discussion that relate to other pieces of what we're discussing today. So. For example, the fact that we're disrupting that steep slope is, is an issue of where we're locating the school, right? We're not putting the school in its current location, we're putting it behind. So if we chose to put the school right where it is, we would not be looking at a steep slope. And although we don't have. Although we're trusting the conservation board to talk to us about the disruption of the steep slope, that would not even be an issue. If the school was located elsewhere. So I do, I do want to understand better from the applicant. How the location of the school was chosen. Because I do think that relates to some of the other issues in our agenda and we can talk about that now or we can talk about it when we get to those items.
But before we go there, because again, you know, as we kept mentioning the. You know, the number of applicants, the, 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 the people that voted for this, that this project, they were really voting for this. It, it, as is and, and maybe there's tiny little things in there. Well, you know, maybe some of them thought the solar panels were included. Maybe they, you know, but. Maybe they weren't sure what was happening with the tree, those little, those little issues, but they, they saw where the site plan was located. On, you know, on these plans. And it's just not, like, how would we build a school at the current location of the current school? Like, where would? Where would all those kids go? Right? So it just, though I know the. Throughout this three year process, and there have been many, many meetings involving the public and to get input. They looked at so many different sites, so many different, everything from renovating the current building to. To looking at it over to the middle, at the middle school, trying to put the school there. And this is the one that worked out best. And so for us to go to challenge. A process, a three year long process that has already been submitted to the MSBA. And to even talk about moving this school, to me, it's just, it's, it's not someplace we should even take a step in that direction. And when we have, when we have a conservation commission. Who also has the purview under the stormwater management, under chapter three forty three, stormwater management. That they also have a purview to, to look at any activity with the results in a soil disturbance and more than ten thousand square feet. So these type of ore activities which disturb land with fifteen percent or greater slopes, this is already in their purview as well. And they're more set up to handle that. This is what they're for. So for us to kind of. Try to step over that line and take even more responsibility and talk about shifting the building. To me, this is not the direction we want to go here. I'm.
And, and just to be clear, I'm not saying that we should be moving that building. In a significant fashion off of its proposed footprint. What I'm saying is that we as a planning board, I believe has have jurisdiction to ask. About how that particular footprint was developed, the proposed footprint and to understand better. How tied we are to that currently proposed footprint, because it does impact some of the other issues we'll be discussing today, such as the grave site. So I'm not in any way suggesting that we have any interest as a board in moving that entire footprint. But I would like to ask the applicant some questions about how the new footprint was chosen and how. If there is any wiggle room in moving any element of it. Lego, you know, almost like Legos to protect that tree and grave site. I would like to understand that. And so I, I don't want my statement to be mischaracterized somehow in arguing that we need to move this entire new footprint. That is not what I'm arguing for.
Yeah, I understand. I guess it's just. Oh, go ahead, John. Go ahead.
I, 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 I think we should let the applicant answer. You know, what Anna said, like, let's get, let, let's get that information. Let, you know, obviously. You know, to the applicant, you're summarizing a massive multi-year effort that involved like hundreds of meetings and, and a ton of work. So. We're kind of, I'm going to shut up and please go ahead.
Sure. So. Okay. So, so as, as we discussed on the walkthrough, Anna. Because you asked this at that point. So we, we went through lots of, lots of options, probably developed. Twelve to fifteen options on each site. We were looking at both Mendez and. The middle school sites.
And, and Paul, were any of those twelve options protecting that tree and grave site fully?
They were not developed to the point where I could, I could definitively say that.
Let me ask a different way. That the, the grave site and the tree, they were not discussed as part of those twelve proposals, right?
They were always on the plans. I'll be very succinct. I, I, I don't know how to answer any differently. You're asking for me, I've, I've already answered it. I can't tell you. The level to which they could be protected on any of those, because the, the design was not to that point.
Thank you. That's all I'm going to clarify.
As I described on, on Saturday, we did have other positions for the building during that process. One of which was over where essentially where the parking lot is over, you know, tucked into that corner by the abutters. So that that was an option. And as I explained on Saturday. If you look, one of the reasons why that wasn't chosen is just if this didn't have any school on it and you said this parcel, I'm going to put a school on it. You would never put a school tucked away out of the way and not be able to see that, but yet put a parking lot out front. And so that was one of the very negative things with that. It also separated the community spaces. So the building and the community spaces of the gymnasium and all those different things would be separated. Dramatically from the fields and the play areas. So moving the building to where it is. Allowed for much better flow symmetry and things like that as it relates to the usage and flow of the site. So those are the reasons why this location in this site was chosen. The middle school, while I'll be honest. I think myself, superintendent, assistant superintendent, all had dreams of a campus over there. And that was our original choice, but it was a very robust process. That, and we're all then convinced that, that Mendez was the right site. And as it relates to modifications. As we described earlier. Shifting it further north and, or north or west comes with lots of complications and cost.
And Paul, just so I'm clear, I'm, it's not just about shifting, right? It's not like this is a rectangle that we're just saying, hey, move it to the left, move it to the right. It has certain nooks and crannies, if you will. It has little open, open spaces inside, outside, right? It's not a perfect rectangle. So what I'm asking the applicant is that, that current configuration. Assuming the footprint stays the same, can you explain to us why that particular configuration was chosen? And as I understand, that particular configuration has to do with sunlight coming into certain classrooms, right? Et cetera. And, and I understand some of this may have been covered during the site walk, Paul, but that was not a public meeting. So I think we need to really make sure that we discuss that today so that we can fully grasp it and understand. Why we're stuck with the footprint as is, because it does relate to our later discussion about the grave site.
Well, everything I'm describing to you was done in multiple. Public meetings, multiple community forums. And I, I don't think we're stuck with anything. I, 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 I may be biased, but I think we're not stuck with anything here. I think we're stuck with a great project. But, so I'm not sure, and it's difficult. So. You're taking a design process. So the shape of this building, it's formed by so many things. There is a very extensive process to develop what's called an educational program. That educational program is very intensive, done by the district, reviewed by the MSBA. With professionals there, not just from the MSBA, but they have committees that have educational design, construction professionals. That shapes the design. And so for instance, we have the three pods, if you will, because that fits what our educational aspirations are. We have this separate kind of segmenting the building with the community spaces on one side and the academics on the other. To help co-locate the, the shared spaces that are used after hours. We do that for that. Ease, we do it for sustainability. We, we, all the different things, like the entrance has. Has that space to the left of it with the windows, because there's no windows directly from the outside in that cafeteria. So that allows that natural light into all the spaces that people inhabit will have natural light. So when you think about modifying anything. It will inevitably have a domino effect on so many other things. And the other thing. To note is we changed this, this building cannot, I'll be very clear, this building cannot change one square foot. It is locked in from the MSBA. If we want to modify this building. We have to stop, we have to go back to the MSBA, we have to present, we have to get approval for that. We cannot just, so it's, it's, this is very different from a standard development project. It's different in that. We're issuing sixty percent CD documents in September, right? Typical things come before you that are ninety to a hundred percent design. They're privately funded, they're much more fluid, they don't have all the considerations we do. So. Yeah, I hope that's helpful. It's, it's.
I think it absolutely is. I think that's something.
Process was an enormously complex interlocking process. And I've only even scratched the surface of how it came to be here. So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're all about, and, and I think it's, to, to be clear. The things we've talked about and we've already modified on the plans are the things that can change, like the, the building massing. And, and the building itself really can't change much, right? So, but the, the landscaping plan and things like that. Provided that it doesn't completely change the, all the civil and, and everything like that. Cause. When you look at it, and, and if you look through all the sets, you'll understand that it, it. You know, a lot of people think, oh, just remove some parking, do this, shift this. And if you, if you look at what's underneath that parking. It's very complex. And so you move one thing and you don't realize that you've just touched. Fifteen different systems and redesign half a dozen others, right?
And I, and I do think that's very helpful to, to, to discuss publicly, because it is. There needs to be an understanding. At this, at our board, at the planning board, that the applicant's position is that the. The configuration, if you will, of the footprint of the proposed building cannot be moved. Because it will prevent the funding as is. And that, that it's not flexible. And I think that does need to be public and clear. And am I summarizing that correct, Paul?
Yeah, yeah, partly. I mean, you know, if we said, hey, we want to shift it ten feet to the west, you know, that, that's not something that the MSBA is going to scoff at. What they'll scoff at is we, and, and I'm not exaggerating, Bill, you know, we went through these exercises, you can keep me honest. We shifted it, if we shifted it back more to the hill, we're probably talking high six or seven figure differences in cost. It, it, it seems silly, but that is. You know, so we're trying to limit the, the, the input, you know, impact in there, both from. We don't want to cut into the slope, we don't want to cut down more trees, but there's also an enormous financial difference. When you start going even just feet back into more into that hill.
And if you don't move feet back, but keep the footprint where it is, you cannot, for example, create some kind of extra space in the building that more. More protects that grave site and tree. That's not possible with the MSBA process. Is that what you're saying?
Modifying the building is very different, yes.
Different or not possible?
Anything is possible. I will not entertain it. How's that? Well, I'll make it as succinct as that.
Could you explain what you mean by that?
But I'll say no if you request it.
And can you explain, does the MSBA agreement with Ashland prevent you from shifting the footprint? Not moving it, but reconfiguring it to further protect the grave site.
What, what, so this is, is this about, is this about the grave? I'm trying to understand the, instead of going and walking around in circles here, trying to understand.
I, I'm trying to understand in general, what, what, what the applicant's position is. Does the MSBA allow you in some way? To move any piece of the footprint, not move the entire footprint, but reconfigure a. An opening anywhere in the footprint. Is that prevented somehow in the agreement between the MSBA and Ashland?
So square footage, things like that, 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 that changes the agreement, because there is a. A space template that has all the square footages that are allowed, all the calculations on reimbursement are based on those. So I, I, I'd rather work on the, what's the issue you're trying to resolve than talk about all the. Potential considerations or challenges with a proposed. Solution to a problem. I have, I'm not quite getting the articulation on.
I think it relates to everything, right? It could relate to parking, it can relate to so many things. But I'll, I'll move on. I think you've answered the question. You believe the agreement with the MSBA prevents you, the applicant. From somehow moving a corner to a different location or taking a piece of the building and reshifting it. You believe the agreement does not allow you to do that, right?
Your statement. I, I think I've, I've answered all the questions. I mean, I don't know where else to go on.
I thi, I think, I think we need to come back to our kind of issue listing and see what the consensus of the group cares around this, like, so we. We, we started, we started with the stormwater and it kind of shifted over to kind of the conversation of slopes. So. I want to come back to the stormwater. I think, again, we've talked about the peer review, we've talked about the follow up. Excuse me?
No, no, I, to get the approval from the conservation company.
So we, we've said broadly that, like, conditioning our approval of this project on the conservation commission's approval. Of the stormwater and runoff water management of the site. So like, let's go, like, I'd like to close off on stormwater. If we are closed off and if we're not, then, then we're not. But I guess I, I, I'm. I, I've said how I feel about, about on the storm waterfront. Why don't we go around?
Yeah, I'm okay with, as long as we get approval from the conservation company, I'm awesome. I'm okay.
Okay, got it.
I'm also going to, I'm also going to put my vote with the conservation.
I'm also gonna, I'm also gonna put my vote with the Conservation Commission with their approval as based on the peer review.
And or Deepa?
I'm I'm willing to make it conditional on the Conservation Board. I I'm not including the peer review within that. I'm just saying the Conservation Board.
Yeah, that's fine. The the condition would not say anything about the peer review. We just reference the Conservation.
That's fine.
Okay, and Deepa?
I'm good with it as well.
Okay, got it. So so I think.
Joe, just if you want to put a finer point on it, that their purview is to issue us a storm water permit. So if you want to. You know, hone in on exactly what you're talking about as an approval, they issued the storm water permit. Just one, FYI.
So I I think I think we should talk about the tree and the graves. I think that's, you know, that's here as as an issue. Where we've we've touched on it, like, I think, like, let's let's get into that if we can next. I'm gonna. I'm gonna say my piece briefly, if that's okay. I, you know, I. I do believe that I I I do believe that we should have, we should reiterate the condition. That. All rules and regulations around the identification of human remains on the site during the project should follow all state, federal, local guidelines. By the book. If things are found, the work stops, the process happens as it's supposed to. I don't have worries that this group wouldn't do that. I think it's a consummately professional group. But I think that we should put that condition in our decision, just to reiterate the point. So that's in terms of the human remains. I do think the memorial site itself has been preserved well. On the topic of the tree. I appreciate the commentary from the applicants, the expert commentary from a number of people. I think this tree is worth saving. I think this tree deserves a shot. Fifty fifty, sixty, forty. I I I think it's worth it. I think that this tree is a is a gorgeous, beautiful tree. I think it's integral. It's I think it's older than a hundred years old. I think it's an integral part of that. Spot. So from my perspective. I would, I would like to see the tree preserved. And I'm perfectly okay, right, with. If we get down the line and the tree dies, the tree will have to be removed. It's a massive tree. I don't want to create a public safety situation for children. You know, at some point, my children will be in this school, so I get it. I but I I think it deserves a shot. It's it survived what they did to it in the fifties. I I think it's still alive. It's still growing. I I'm not an arborist. You say it's fifty fifty, you say it's sixty forty, you know. We did way worse to a tree. In front of one twenty eight main, it's not a three hundred, two hundred year old tree. But we we protected that tree. And as far as I can tell, that tree has survived that process. And is still alive. And we're talking about doing things to it in this process, where what we would do if we tried to save it. Are far advanced over what we did. At one twenty eight name. I mean, they put a wood barricade around it and tried to be careful. A and and we conditioned around that, like. This is like brain surgery level. What I heard Mr. Marshall talk about is like brain surgery level of care. I I personally feel like that beautiful tree, if it makes it sitting in front of that school. At grade level, right? The grade is coming up to this grave site in this tree. I think it would be stunning. I think it's a it's an unbelievable melding. Of this memorial site, of this sacred space, the past, the history, with the future, with this absolute rocket ship of a school. That is amazing, right? It's an amazing design. I'm like. I think it's a really exciting thing for Ashland. So my personal appeal, my opinion is, I would love to see us try to save the tree. And I, again, I would understand that if it becomes a safety issue, it has to go. But I I think it's worth a shot. I mean, if we don't try to do hard things, we don't accomplish things, right? Going to the moon was a hard thing, but we did it. And it was probably less than fifty fifty. So that's my vote. I know it costs money, but that's how I feel about it. And 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 I'll and I'll be quiet now. I'd love to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Well, I I will jump in and I will say that I completely agree with you about the any. Remains that may be. Found there. I I doubt anyone on the planning board is going to disagree with that, that we we want those treated with absolute respect. Following all protocols. That are appropriate to that location. On the tree issue, I cannot agree with you. And for a number of reasons, I went out and I looked at the tree today. I've seen it before. I've spent a lot of time behind Mendez for various reasons. But I looked at it more closely this time, looked at the back, looked at the front and. In my mind, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I've seen many beautiful trees. I wouldn't. Put this in that category. And. The the funds that would be spent to try to preserve the tree. Could go to something else with, I I personally really liked the renderings that showed. This this grave, this this it, this area in a new special garden, so that there's this old. Old grave marker in in a new special garden. And to me, I thought that was an incredible way. Of of celebrating this life or lives, you know, whatever is found there. I think Cliff also implied there might not be anything there at all. Because of the 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 gap in time about when it was marked. So I actually really liked. Both Laxmi's comment about, hey, could we plant another oak tree? You know, I don't think she said this, but it could be of the same type. On the site or nearby or, you know, but I like that idea. And I also like Deepa's idea, if 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 it can happen. About using that tree, if if possible, obviously it was described that there may be difficulties in. Finding a mill or or whatever. To to use that. Material in another way and to give it another life. I also had a big oak tree at our last house and like Matt Marchquist talked. About the trees in his yard, self-proclaimed tree hugger, that we lost limbs all the time, you know, big limbs. And it was a little scary, you know, actually. And so. I just, I just don't see it. I think it's a, it's a big tree. It's an old tree, but. You know, there's kind of. There there's a lot of those around. And I would rather have some new, strong specimen trees planted in this, in this site. Rather than put all these resources into try to preserving. This one. That's my two cents.
Oh, I I'm, I'll jump into this. I think this is, this is a really challenging, challenging issue. I don't think this is just a tree, right? If this was a tree, I I'm not sure we have jurisdiction as the planning board. To. To save a tree on this site if we approve the plan, right? There's going to be hundreds of trees coming down. On this site. And this could, this could be one of those trees, if it was a tree. But it's not a tree. It is part of a grave site. It's part of Aaron's grave site, right? There's an actual Revolutionary War. Veteran who was buried there. And I can tell you, as an immigrant to this country, you know, my family came here, my parents were political refugees and we came here. In nineteen eighty eight to the US. And I take the Revolutionary War quite seriously. I I don't know what's more more patriotic, really, for Americans. With, that's how we became this country, right? And I do think we have an obligation as the planning board, part of the site. Site plan review is to consider the purpose of a site plan review right in our bylaws is to consider our history and the preservation of that history. So I have some deep concerns about that tree, not because it's a tree. Which I value very much. And I think the Conservation Board will tell us more about trees. That's where their jurisdiction may be. But I believe our jurisdiction is in protecting the grave site and the history. There's a lot of people that are here, part of this process for three years, right? The Sustainability Committee was part of this. There were groups about solar. There were groups about making that parking lot address needs of the community. There was so much work done. There are so many people here. Who's who's not here? We don't have the tree warden here to tell us about the the health of that tree. We don't have the daughters of the revolution, I believe is what they're called. Correct me, somebody, what they're called. But those are the folks that put the marker on that grave, right? And know about the history of that grave site and that tree, which are one and the same. We don't have anyone here or any voice from the Ashland Historical Commission. On the history of that grave site, including the tree. We don't have any formal undertaking done about the history of this site from the Ashland Historical Society. We have no voice from the Massachusetts Archaeologist Office, which is part of the Massachusetts State. Conservation. Board, if you will. We, as far as I can tell, no one on this board has reviewed the preservation guidelines for municipally owned historical burly grounds. That's three hundred and forty pages long, issued by the Massachusetts Department of Conservation. That talks about the importance of preserving historical grave sites such as this. And as far as I know, we have not done any process publicly to really understand that. How we're going to protect this grave site. On top of it, I've heard nothing from the applicant. About any concerns about this grave site until Saturday. When we did the site walk and a question was asked whether this tree would be coming down. And for the first time. We began hearing about the impact of those root systems upon that grave site. So I'm of the opinion that this issue is a bit premature. We have not properly. Given it the due diligence it deserves to make a decision that would remove that tree in some way.
Okay, I'll go next. Again, I agree with everybody about the human remains. It should be dealt with respect and follow all federal and state guidelines. Regarding tree, I have mixed feelings. I agree. That the tree needs to be preserved because of the grave side, but there are ways, I think there are means and ways to do that if we don't. Remove the tree with the root system, maybe. A stump, like bring it to a stump level and grind it like we were talking about when we were talking about the scenic highway. Maybe that's the way to preserve it. And maybe plant an oak tree somewhere else of the same type, or maybe a type that suits Ashland vegetation, right? So maybe do it that way. But if. All efforts need to be taken to preserve that tree. But I think our main goal in this conversation is. To preserve a grave side and also make sure that we are not cutting trees unless needed, right? So if it's regarding preserving the grave site, maybe stump the tree and grind it and leave just that stump without pulling the roots. So we do not disturb the grave site and preserve the grave site. And to replace that tree, build a plant a tree somewhere else, it didn't the same property. That's why I was asking them. Like what kinds of, how many trees are we planting and how many trees are coming down, right? And as part of that mix, can we add the oak tree? So I would. My my first. What would be to preserve the tree? But if all efforts are in vain, go to the next step where we preserve the grave stuff by stomping it and grinding it. And maybe plant an oak tree somewhere else. So that's what I will.
I really did think about it the way Lakshmi did. So thank you, Lakshmi, to mention that. I understand. That we should be careful when we're bringing down the trees, but. The other aspect is, is really close to the new building. And there's also a safety concern to the kids in that building. So. And I don't think Marshall or Bill Bishe's ever said that they're going to bring it down. They definitely said there's a fifty fifty chance or a sixty forty. They definitely didn't say that they're going to bring that down. So. This is a tricky one. And I think. Again, like Lakshmi said, I definitely have mixed feelings. But I feel like safety of the kids is definitely priority. It's way too close. And I think between now and the time the construction starts. We may have a very different view about the same tree. So I don't know if there is something that we should wait to figure out. Six months or one year from now on when. Every winter, it's a different story. So I wonder, we should wait. To figure this out.
So to Deepa, if I may, just to clarify, so. The plan is we are going to, at the start. Remove the tree. We're expecting the grave site as as been said, right? The whole plan is. We are not disturbing the grave. That is paramount in the activity, right? So it would be absolutely not that. But it's not. The the and and Eddie can jump in if you want detail on it. If we were to make any attempt, it's it's a concerted effort from the get go. It's not, hey, we're going to wait to see if it. We we know it's going to be stressed. We know it's going to be, if if we don't, if we just. Do the construction without taking measures. That would be, you know, Eddie, if you can, if you if you want to correct me, that would be completely reckless. And and because you would absolutely be adding the stress to it. You would almost certainly be adding tremendous risk, not only to the kids, but we're going to have lots of workers there. And things like that. So the plan would absolutely be respectfully remove this at the start of the of the of the project. So I don't want to. You you mentioned something like we might, we may or may not. It's fifty fifty. The fifty fifty was at best if we. Double down, spent the money, got every, got all the experts who tried our darnedest to to do it. That that that's only when it was fifty fifty. And so I just want to make sure that was clear.
Could I ask the applicant to clarify something? So I I looked at. The Massachusetts General Laws, chapter one fourteen, section seventeen. Preservation of ancient burial places. The town shall not alienate or appropriate to any other use that. Then that of a burial ground, any tract of land. Which has been for more than one hundred years used as a burial place. No portion of such burial ground shall be taken for public use. Without special authority from the general court. Could the applicant tell me how you are not violating that section of the law? When you are proposing to remove that tree from that land?
I I I'm not sure I'm going to have any of the team members try to answer a legal question for you.
So you, so so essentially you're proposing the removal and and I'm assuming you're not concerned about that law in any way. That's what I'm hearing.
No. And and if I may, just put on my school committee hat, right? So. And maybe maybe just two comments for you to consider. I guess I'll first I'll stick with the with the. Building committee hat. So as I mentioned before, the building committee is the. Has oversight over this project. And essentially, we're also the fiduciaries for for this project and this and the and the funds for the town. We listened to the experts and you you said we didn't talk to the 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 tree warden. No disrespect to tree warden. We have landscape experts here, right? We have tree experts that have weighed in, understanding this. So I don't know that he's going to lend a different perspective than that, but. The experts here, optimistically, at best, reach us to fifty percent with that spending money that's. That's doubling down, that's that's spending the taxpayers' money. If I walked into a casino and I got at best fifty fifty odds, that sounds really good. But when it comes to being a fiduciary for the town's dollars, that doesn't strike me as very good. You know, when we can take the same amount of money that was left over. And plant however many trees. And then if we. Don't spend that money and it's available to the town, they can go, so. And risk, because I've I put on my my school committee hat. It it it's an enormous risk that the 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 workers are going to be taking. We have an active school afterwards. And then if it happens that this tree is not going to survive and it's not doing well. Now we have a complicated. And expensive. Removal that tree after the fact that it carries with it risk to the building to the, so. I'm going to, I want us to listen to the experts we pay, who. If anybody on this call, nobody's a bigger tree hugger than Eddie, right? And and it's not easy for him, but the the collective team is telling us. It is not in our best interest. And this isn't a developer telling us. These are our consultants. That the town is paying. It's not for somebody else's benefit. And I I think we should be valuing that expertise. And 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 respectfully, I'm not sure the the board's purview in this. It's a tree that the it's under the care and custody of the school right now. We could take it down tomorrow if we wanted to. Right? We could take it down the day after it was built, right? So the the. Right? We could take it down the day after it was built, right? So the, the, it's, the, the, it's, I'm not sure that, and we've given you lots of information from experts, both on the construction and on a landscape architect and it, it's, it's
So Paul, with all due respect, what I've heard is expert opinion that if we build the school exactly where it is, there's a fifty fifty percent chance that tree will die. Right? Unless we make some sort of special efforts, right? That's what I've heard and I'm not questioning that.
No, that's not what you heard.
That's what I was saying though.
No, it's not. What was said is if we make an expensive concerted effort, at best, we will reach fifty percent. That is very different than what you just said. You said if we build, it's at fifty percent, right? That's, that's not, that's not what was said. That's if we expend a lot of money, effort and re, and assume a certain amount of risk that we at best, but you know, will be fifty percent.
We would have to take on a lot of monetary, monetary responsibility to get the right protection to it, okay? So I, I, and I respect that opinion. What we do with that opinion, you know, we can discuss. What I have not heard is an expert opinion from this team relative to protection of burial sites. That's a different issue. I understand we're talking about this tree like it's just, just there. I'm telling you, this is not just any tree to me. This is a burial site. I have yet to hear any expert on this call tell me they have prior experience excavating burial sites in their opinion as an expert as to whether this tree is inherently part of this burial site. And what are you going to do to not break state law that I just stated? This expert opinion I have yet to hear.
Not, not sure how to respond. We're not excavating anything in the burial site, but we, we're talking about removing
Removing a tree with deep root systems that are part of this burial site. Okay, if, if this was my family member buried next to a tree, I would like to hear how this will be done without disturbing the burial site that we, I believe, have an obligation to protect under state law. And I have yet to hear anybody on this call tell me that you've evaluated this to offer any expert opinion on how you're going to do this and not violate that statute.
So let's hear from Eddie.
No, that's fine. When we, we would not remove the roots. So in a sense, we would not be violating that, that graveside. And in fact, throughout New England, there's many cemeteries that, in fact, there's a cemetery within kind of half mile from where I live. A lot of the oak street, the oak trees have died and they've have, and they've been removed. So there is actually kind of a long history of, you know, the, I love the idea of people planting the, the trees in the cemetery. It really makes them more restful, more peaceful. And so when those trees come out, they, they are basically flush cut.
So Eddie, tell me, what is your expert opinion on the current health of that tree?
I, as I said before, I, and we went through that diagram, there were, there are aspects of it where I, I like the idea that that concrete wall is actually kind of created that, a planetary, if you will. And it's on that backside, on that north side, where the in order for this tree to have been growing, all the roots are kind of moving up into that nor, northern area. And I suspect that even though we had a canopy plan that had fifty foot diameter, that even more roots are even further into that northern zone. So hence more impact through construction. A more impact during construction and, and even as when we were talking about just the means and methods of, of building the building and the, the, it, it between staging and laws and all the equipment that has to go through there. It, it becomes really restrictive in terms of that distance. And that's why we had that plan that showed, you know, where the tree was in relationship to not only kind of the building corner, but then kind of those existing areas where you, you'd need for worker safety. I, I have not, this is not kind of a parallel, but I have worked on a site with the Mass State Archaeologist, and this is on the vineyard. And remains were found. But what was found was discolored soil. And in fact, I, I actually went over on the ferry with the archaeologist. Because I knew he's come to the site and so I just, I bumped into him on the ferry. I said, so, I said, are you going to, what, what do you think you'll find?
Eddie, with all due respect, I, I completely am not concerned about your abilities to take care of the remains outside of that site, right? Like I, I, just so you know, you don't have to convince me, you guys are professionals and that if you find remains, you will do the right things. I'm, I'm more concerned about hearing how, how are you going to remove that tree and not harm the root system that is part of Aaron's grave? That's what I want to hear about. I, I really do trust. If you find remains outside of it, outside of those white picket fence, you're, you're going to take worry about that.
So I would actually like to think if when, when we cut that tree, that we could even cut it a little bit higher. There's actually a science lesson here. There's a science lesson that we, you can start to look at the tree rings. There, there's, there's a fascinating history lesson inside that tree that can be revealed. So I would look at, let's see how we can look at an educational opportunity. And, and, and so when you start counting back these tree rings, you can even look at how the tree has, has grown through different seasons. When it had good growth years, when it has stress growth, growth years, I suspect that you can identify back in the fifties when they put that concrete wall in by looking. So I would like to use the remains of that tree as an educational opportunity for the school. But we, we, we will determine what that height is above ground. Everything that is currently below ground stays below ground. We, we're not going to be ripping this tree up with the roots. And I, I, I guess I should have explained that in my initial part of my presentation. Because when you were asking me the questions about the tree and in the, in the graveside, I guess I was, I was a bit confused, but you, you, one, you bring up a good point. But it, it's certainly our intent to, to leave all of that intact. Everything just has that same resting place.
So the idea is we're stumping the tree rather than removing the roots. And, and is that in your expert opinion, a normal standard process in Massachusetts at a, at gravesites to stump trees? That that's done routinely?
I don't know if it's done routinely. I think it's, it's really up to kind of the local arborists and, and are also what's the, what, what's the reason why, why the tree has been removed? Sometimes if the tree has been removed because of either a, a, a blight or virus condition and that virus condition is still going to be growing within the roots or the stump, they, they're more motivated to remove it. But if it's a safe with strong damage to kill the tree or a lightning strike would be, so that they would just do a flush cut. And it, it, in, you know, back to your point, where is this, for, for whatever cemetery that you're in, where is this tree located in relationship to the graves? And so I think how we, we want to exercise a lighter touch. You know, if it's something that's up by a street or something, okay. But yeah, no, once, I, I think you're, you're, all, all your points are very well taken. And I think about once, obviously where this tree is, where you know the grave is, we want to have an extremely light touch.
So, so I guess my, my feeling on this, as of, based on what Eddie has said, and I so appreciate your patience, Eddie, and your, your and, and your respect for the topic. My feeling is my preference is to hear more. I, I'm not quite, I would like to take care and preserve the whole tree. I understand there's a severe expense. I understand there's a member of the public that offered some, some person for you guys to talk to. And there's an, I've also heard from Paul about the excessive costs of doing this. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. I'd like to understand what the costs are. I'd like to understand what would be involved in saving it before we, we decide to either save it or not save it. I'd like to make a more informed decision. But my preference is to try to save it if you come back to us with data that allows us to do so. My plan B would be to talk about that educational stumping, if you will, of that tree. And, and how we're going to have a beautiful school building with a stump in front of it and how that stump at Aaron's site is going to be the image to our kids and what that says about us. And we, we need to figure out how that image is going to work. And what we're going to do with it to make that educational invaluable, because I haven't heard that this has been part of the public process until now in this kind of vigorous fashion. So I'm not ready without more information from the experts in history to really opine as to how we're going to stump this in an educated fashion.
Yeah, that's fair.
Thank you, Anna. So just stepping back and recapping here, if we look at our five, I just want to make sure I characterize it right. I think we have three members who are if you disagree with what I summarized, please say so. I think we have three members who voted that they're okay, supported, okay with the tree being removed. And I think there's two members who, who voiced opposition to removing the tree and have pressed for preservation of the tree.
Removal? Do you mean removing the roots or stuff or?
At no point, no. I mean, like removing the roots would absolutely disturb the graves. Nobody's going there. Nobody said that. So, so when I say removal, I'm, I'm saying, you know, we're cutting the tree down, leaving a stump. Right? So that, that's what I'm deeming as removal. So I think there's, there's three votes. There's three, three people on the board are kind of along the lines of the tree would be removed and stumped. And two who are saying would really like to make the effort to try to save it. I think, I think, I think that's the, that's the consensus of the board, right? As much as I may not like that, I do think, I do think, I'm sorry, Lakshmi, go ahead.
Yeah. So I think Joe, the only thing I would add to that is I, I support first making all efforts to preserve the tree, but if all efforts go in vain, we just, we can cut the tree but stump it and like you said, but also make a way to compensate for the oak tree that we're losing somewhere else.
I don't think, so I understand what you said Lakshmi, but I don't think that's, the, the ask from this applicant is to remove the tree. That's what they're going to do unless, that's what they are going to do unless, unless in our view, we, you know, condition that we want the tree preserved, right?
It's not clear to me if Lakshmi wants it, is okay with it being removed or not. I'm not clear on
Yeah, I said I have mixed feelings about it, but I, I'm, I want first all efforts to be made to preserve the tree. But if all efforts go, are in vain, then they can go cut the tree. I'm not saying first go cut the tree. I'm, I'm saying I want to first make all efforts to preserve the tree.
Okay, okay, I got it. So, so that, that's along the lines of what I said, which was make all efforts to preserve the tree. And if in the process it is not saved or it is compromised or unsafe, that it's removed. So that's what I said. I believe that's what Anna said, and that's what you're saying, Lakshmi.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So are we, are we willing to put that in regardless before understanding what the cost might be? So regardless of cost?
I, I think, I think getting the information about the cost of this would be a good data point. And as for that, I think it would be an excellent data point. I think you should get it. I know, I know.
I'm going to investigate challenging if that's, if that's a condition. I don't, I don't think it's in your purview. It's under the control of the school committee right now.
Excuse me, Mr. Kandla, can I please just step in here, Town Planner Peter Machek? So as this tree has come up in discussion multiple times, yesterday I did talk to town council and this tree is in the purview of the planning board. And if you would like legal, a legal opinion, I'm more than happy to get that for you. But I think we should continue on and argue about is this tree in the purview of the planning board or not? Because what I understand is from town council is it is. So thank you so much.
Joe, may I ask a question? And if no one else is interested in this, we don't need to go there. Would it be worthwhile to ask town council and be, to, to clarify the position? Because we may, if the costs are prohibitive, right? Like let's pretend for a minute, we get the data point and the cost is prohibitive and we change our minds. The three people right now that are thinking of protecting this tree, let's say we, we change our minds and we, we cut that, right? I, I want to make sure that that does not violate the state statute that I cited.
I, I was trying to get there and I was trying to get there. So in addition to the, in addition to the cost data, it's some estimate, it's an estimate, I'm clear. In addition to that, like I think we need to check the box on the mass general law. I'm not a lawyer. But you've cited a law. I've seen another person cite a law. I think it takes, we, we run both those mass general laws across council and make sure they're not being violated. I'm sure that they're being considered by this group, but I think we should check the box.
I just want to be narrow in on the question that our question for town council is relative to the issue of the stump, right? If we decide that the stump is where we're going to go, is that under the section I cited, Chapter one fourteen, Section seventeen, are we taking for public use without special authority? That's, that's the question that I'd like clarified.
Okay. So Peter, that's the, that's Anna's question. The other, the other law I saw referenced was Mass General Law, Chapter two seventy-two, Section seventy-three.
Yeah, I'm not sure that applies to to this type of ancient burial site, but sure, we can throw that
I don't, I don't have it. I don't, but somebody else
Repeat that real quick. I'm sorry.
It is Mass General Law. It's Part Four, Chapter two seventy-two, Section seventy-three. Again, I'm not insinuating that the law is being violated or proposing to violate the law. I think we should just check the box. It takes two, it, it takes a brief review from a lawyer. Let's make sure that
And I'm saying the exact same thing. I am in no way offering any kind of legal advice to this board or making a legal opinion. So I, I'm simply asking the question that we have some kind of clarity if we do decide to, to cut it. From what I'm hearing, there's three people on this board who would, who would like to try to save it. But we may change our minds once we see the data, right? We need to make an informed decision.
Just to mention, Joe, so I take down those mass general laws that were noted. And I will bring this issue to town council for clarity. To, to just not to belittle the point, but I think that's where we kind of stand.
So so I think we're going to get some additional data for our next meeting. And in, in terms of, in terms of conditions, the way it currently sits, before we review the additional information, the consensus of the board is that, the, is that we would like to make an effort to save the tree. And if that effort fails, the tree is to be removed. So I, I think that's, that's the consensus of the board. Let's get the additional data, clarify the law. And from that point, I think we can either strike said condition from the draft agreement, the draft decision, or it can be maintained based on the, based on the
Can we be clear, Joe, on what that data is? What are we asking the applicants to deliver to us as far as data?
So I, I think you asked the question. I think you summarized it well. Why don't, I would ask you to kind of reiterate what you had said previously.
Sure. I, I think what I'm, what I'm asking is Eddie, you mentioned some, some expertise, if you will, in or I think someone did. I don't remember. Somebody on your team mentioned the, the potential, maybe it was Phil, somebody mentioned there is an expense involved in working with an arboretum expert. I don't know who said it.
An arborist.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know that. That was me. That was me. Yeah.
Yes. And so I, I think one data point is can you bring some data on that for us?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
That and what would that look like? I think there was a member of the public or go ahead, Joe.
You, you described the course of treatment, Eddie. So the cost estimate should be everything what you said. Like let's not lowball, like let's get the real number based on what you
Yes. There was someone, I don't know if it was a member of the public or a member of the
Kathy.
Right. What, do we want to address that in some way? She mentioned somebody she knows. Is that, is that worthwhile discussing as far as a data point or not?
I, just to jump in from my point of view, I think the applicant with Eddie Marshall and his and his ability to contact a, a, a licensed arborist who, and they're all they're all through the state. I think we can go ahead and trust.
Comfortable with that.
I, I'm comfortable as the town planner with that.
Is there any other data point I missed?
Joe, can I? No, you can take it. I just want to note that Superintendent Jim Adams has his hand raised.
Let's, please Superintendent Adams.
Great. Thanks. Uh, I just want to make sure too, and as I'm listening to the conversation with regard to. Uh, future expenditures and costs, just with regard to the tree itself. In which I know Eddie and, and his team will, will determine that. But if there's ancillary costs as it relates to the building project itself. Uh, I think those have to be also factored in. I don't know what those costs might be, but if there's, if, if Phil and his team have to then rearrange and adjust. How they are working within the site location, I think that is something that we can't dismiss either, or you shouldn't dismiss.
The team needs to address that as well.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think it's just the, the date, that one data point you're suggesting. I think there's more to it than just the tree itself.
Yes. Let's be whole and get all the potential costs addressed so that we can make an informed decision. And then the, the other piece is I'm, is there was this discussion, what if we, what if the consensus of the board shifts and we change our minds? And we're looking at the stump, right? And the educational opportunity, if you will, of how are we going to have this in front of the school, right? This reminds me of the storage facility in front of the middle school, but this is a little different because we're talking about a burial ground. Um, I, I do think it would be helpful to hear more from the applicant, what the vision is for this educational. Opportunity that Eddie has mentioned. I would like to hear more about that so I can make an informed decision.
Sure.
So, and, and, and Eddie makes sure, because we've talked about this obviously as well, um, there's an ongoing cost. Uh, to this as well. So say everything goes swimmingly. We need to maintain this tree in its current location, right? We need somebody, uh, professional. So it's not like all the other trees on the site that, you know, we can be reactive. We need to be proactive. And so that's another, uh, ongoing cost outside of the scope of just the project that'll need to be factored in as well.
We, we, we can, we can easily get that. Absolutely. No, I think we want to be thorough, want to be looking. I mean, because there's, there'll be things we will want to be doing to the, uh, to the tree. If the decision is to save it before any construction starts.
And, and could I speak a little bit more on the educational piece of, of if we cut this? And maybe Jim can comment to this. Would there be any, any resistance from the applicant of, can the applicant get some? Some information about this grave and give us a little bit more of a presentation of how you're going to educate the public in, in cutting this thing down? If that's where we go. Um, how will the history of this grave be preserved? Um, a little bit more on that. I'm, I'm not hearing that the applicant has done sufficient due diligence to make me feel comfortable. As to how we're going to use the, the cut tree to educate the public and properly preserve Aaron's grave.
So, uh, again, I don't want to get into what your purview is within the planning board to approve a, a, a building itself and, and the site. The educational component is, I think, outside of that realm, right? So.
I agree.
We're preserving the, the grave and what however, uh, in that site, uh, in the sacred site that it is. Uh, and trying to then we will determine how we use, uh. The historical context and maybe Cliff will have some, I can reach out to him and figure out, you know, truly. What the history behind it is, and then it's sort of, listen, I, I, I've got Devil's Den deja vu all over again, right? Um, having worked and built up, up at the high school, the fields, like the historical context is important. I, I was a history teacher. That being said, we have to go, it's gonna, it's, it will take time to dig more deeply into that. And then determine how it will be used within the.
I, I agree, and I would prefer that we would have heard about this, the first meeting we had on this topic, right? So, but I agree with you, and I'm not trying to educate the kids. That's not my job, but Eddie raised the issue. That this is an educational opportunity. That's what I'm responding to. So if that's being raised.
I appreciate that. I'm just saying, I don't think it's part of the planning board's purview. I think it's part of the school committee's purview, but that's.
Trisha is the idea of a bench or a garden, right?
Sure.
So, so I, I do believe there's a way that the planning board can have jurisdiction and a proper way to, to honor Aaron's grave. If we're going to cut that tree. I, I like Trisha's ideas. I liked Eddie's ideas. I'd like to hear more, and I don't think we're crossing a line there.
Likely non-binding in a.
I know, but let me just finish. I, I agree from the planning board, what you're doing. I'm talking about an educational component. And the teaching is not within the purview of the planning board. That, that's, that's my point.
Let me be clear. When I say teaching, I meant Eddie's example of, there's got to be a way to make this, um, you know, educational. And I'm imagining a school with a tree, a tree cut in front of it. That's surely not how we want to present in front of the school building. And I, and I believe Jim, that you, you, you may want to talk to us about that. And tell us about your, your vision of, of how this will look. That's where I'm going with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that development of curriculum isn't something we do flippantly though. So how it integrates and how we use it. I mean, hundred percent agree with you, Anna, that every, everything on this site, we've talked about it from the get-go with the building. And having the building be a learning building. If there's a mechanical system, we can expose it. If there's something, we're, 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 we're looking to do that. So hundred percent on board, but Eddie threw out an idea for, for you to ask for Jim. And potentially Mike Kyra to come up with curriculum and how it was going to be used. Uh, that's, that's really.
I'm not talking curriculum. I'm talking about.
I think we need to move on from this curriculum thing. Like, I, I think.
Yeah, we agree. Nobody's saying let's write curriculum. Yep.
Okay. Um, so we've got the electrics, we've got the sign. Um, well. We've got the sign. So I'll summarize quickly. Um, the positioning of the sign as proposed this evening in the presentation we saw shifts back to the, to the median between the two roads. And it's pushed back in additionally to additionally feet. So it's about twenty feet setback from, from the property. From the property line shielding it, uh, especially coming from Concord Street. I, I don't, it does, I, I can't call the direction, but, um, so I guess. Like, what is the board's thoughts on this sign as proposed based on the location as proposed?
I like the sign between the median. I think it works well. I'm in favor of it between the median and being an electric sign. Though I do think there could be a stipulation on it as, um. As, uh, Preston said that, and I don't think this is the school's intention at all, but to. Regulate how often the sign is changed. So like it's, I'm sure they're not intending to flip it through every ten seconds. So, but I thought that was an interesting comment by Preston, so.
Just, uh, to jump in, Trish, I still, I do have some, uh, some history on signs. Uh, typically towns like the condition, um, there shall be no move. Typically, there's also a federal, you know, other regulations like bouncing balls for cars that are driving by. So you typically, you typically want to go one static to another static item. And so, so it doesn't, it's not obviously, uh. Causing any drivers, you know, hazards on the roadway. Uh, other items that we may want to talk about are, uh. What time to get shut off or it goes dark out at night.
I think that's a good one.
You know, so that's just another item. Um, and then also is this going to be a color sign? Um, you want to make sure that it's going to be, you know, i- is it black and white or is it color? How often can it change the lettering, one static image to another static image? Then also just how often does it, you know, at what time does it start up in the morning? Obviously whenever school arrives. But also what time does it go out at night? So the thing's off layer and at, you know, two o'clock in the morning.
For, for my end, I'm okay with the position. I appreciated shifting back the distance it has. Uh, I, I'm fine with it. The only thing that I, the only thing that I would, from my seat, the only thing I'd consider asking is, is. Can we, you know, could we, could we condition, uh, you know, it's going to shut off by ten P M. And it doesn't go on before six A M. Or I, wha- whatever would work for the school, that's the only place that I want to touch it. I don't think the school's going to do anything beyond that. So I'm not interested in going to all of what you just said, Peter, but I, I would maybe just say start and stop time. But otherwise I'm, I'm good with the sign.
Um, same here. I'm, uh, okay with the sign being the median, uh, and I agree with the timing. Um, but is this the final rendering or do we condition to see the final, right?
What I, what, what I propose a- as our approach, which we don't have to take, is that we're approving the location. In the median as well as the setback. We are not, we are not conditioning the look, the finish, any of the details.
And Joe, that it can be an electronic sign.
Yes, thank you. And that it can be an electronic.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm for that. Yeah.
Um, so Anna, in deeper.
Do you want to speak on this?
Um, sure. Um, I do like the idea that it is in the median as well. But I also wonder if there's a little more landscaping elements added to that median so that it just doesn't stand out. Right now it feels like, I understand it's a sixty percent, so we are not there yet. Um, it feels like it needs a little more landscaping elements just so that it does not stand out as an independent element. Um, the first view where it was on the side, it felt like it was kind of gelling in with the surroundings. But when you brought it to the median, it helps that it's offset a bit, but I think it's, it could use a little more landscaping elements around it. So that it just stick out like a sort of I'm on a scenic street.
Yeah, I agree with that. That could be reviewed as part of the, um, um, when we actually see the designs. For the sign, that could, landscaping could be part of that.
Yeah, indeed, but I think that's a good comment. I just want to point out that the, what was shown, um, as, as far as the pictures. Aren't the future there. It's, that's the existing median that's there. So those are, those are from Google Street View. So ju- just to give you a perspective on, on the, on those, on those things you saw, that's not the end state. That's just showing you where it is. The median, that median is a probably a decent representation, but it's, it's not, it wasn't, uh, based on the, the.
Sure. And what I understood was the main intent was to understand the scale of that sign as well. So that was the main intention of that.
But I, I, I saw Eddie shaking his head and, and I, I expect he will, uh, he will landscape it all.
Yeah, we will.
Um, Anna, do you have any?
Um, I, I mean, I, I was really pleased to see it move more, more, you know, further away from the scenic route. Um, and I, I'm absolutely on board with, um, some kind of timing mechanism relative to the electronic component. My concern is, you know, what we're doing is we're, we're, we are essentially agreeing. The consensus seems to be that we're, we're agreeing this meets the, the Dover amendment requirements. Because if this was a private developer. If I was a private developer coming in and wanting a sign, I would ask us why this is different. And I do think we need to go through a small exercise to make sure that we're protected so that if there is, um, question later. How, how this meets the Dover, the Dover amendment, we take care of that. And so as a matter of public courtesy. I, I do want to hear a little bit about the educa- educational purpose of having an electric sign there. And why a non-electric one would not take care of that educational purpose properly. And I understand that might seem like an annoying question, um, but I, I just want to protect us, um, in the future. Protect the board from being asked why, why other developers could not put that sign there. So Jim, could you speak to that? Could you tell us a little bit more about the educational purpose of this electronic component? And why not having it would, would, would not work?
So facilitating the, the need to distribute information to our community is critically important, right? Whether it's just our, our parents that are involved in Mendez or the community itself. I, the electronic sign makes facilitation of, of that information a lot, a lot easier, a lot more efficient. Uh, if you've noticed at the high school, um, you know, we had, when they built the high school, uh, they put in this, this sign that Russ. And, uh, and is very hard to manipulate in terms of getting information up. Uh, you physically need to go out there in the middle of the snow, so cut all these swaths of snow out and lift up the, uh. You know, the glass and then take these, uh, signs and actually form sentences and put them out. Uh, it very, um, not efficient, um. Eyesore eventually becomes, uh, and then, so that's the reason why we moved to an electronic sign at the high school, which will be coming online. Um, hopefully very soon it's up, it's in. Um, that being said, I, I want to emphasize it's not. It, the educational component is about educating our community about what's happening within our schools. That's where that component comes in and the community. You drive by there on Concord Street and it's set back and you're saying, okay, town meeting is at the high school. Uh, on, you know, June second. That's an important thing for our community members who may never get up to, uh, high school. Or you've got in town, you know, we wheel out these, um, portable sign systems, right? It says town meeting or click, make sure you go vote here. Uh, this is just one more avenue of that, which I think is a more aesthetic and pleasing look than.
I understand. I, I think that, and I appreciate that very much. Um, and I, and I, I, I. I, I have to say, I, and I, and I respect that, um, but as I, as I'm listening to you, I'm, I'm changing my mind and that's fine. We're not all going to agree on everything at this, you know, always. And it sounds like you have the consensus of the board. Um, but I, I don't think it meets the Dover amendment. So I, 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 I'm not hearing it. So, but that's okay. I, we're not always all going to agree. So.
I agree a hundred percent. I agree. We're not always going to agree.
Yeah. So that's fine.
Okay. Okay. So on the sign, it, I think we're, we're, we're the, the consensus is the sign as proposed. The twenty foot setback, uh, electronic and, um, potentially conditioning just hours of operation, start and end. Uh, I think that's where the board is at, um, from a decision perspective, um.
It, it, Joe, if I could, when you, when you talk about the hours of operation, obviously the nighttime's an easy one. Um, a- as it relates to the start, uh, if it maybe make it relative to the, to the, the start of school or something like that.
Yeah, it tells us what works. I, I think we're well.
I don't, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know it works, but I'm just like, I'd hate to be, uh, setting something totally in stone. That we're beholden to forever as things adjust, but we want to do the right thing, right? So I, um, I'm, I'm totally on board with doing the right thing. Just, uh, just want to be careful on, on, I want, I want to be called before, called before.
You don't want to get pinned, you don't want to get, yeah, we, we don't, I mean, we don't, we don't want to do something that inhibits the functionality and usefulness of the school. And, 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 yeah, I, I understand where you are. So.
Joe, just, uh, one proposal, Peter Machet Town Planner, just, you know, obviously schools, the starts of times. The start of school changes year after year, right? So I think we could just have a condition that says the sign shall be activated. A half hour before the start of school. And just leave it at that. So if the time fluctuates over the years, it's always a half hour before the start of school.
Jim, do you think a half hour is, I'd like to hear you, would you prefer like?
I would have said to Peter, maybe at least an hour, uh, only because, um, when we're dealing with.
Inclimate weather and stuff like that.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah.
No problem. Hour works for me.
Buses are arriving a half hour before school begins. So.
Sounds good. Yeah. Perfect.
Yeah, I, I, I think we could, yeah, I'm more than happy to.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay. So I, I think that's the sign, um.
Parking.
Parking. So, uh, I'm just going to get my, my mouth out of the way here. Um. I, I think we've talked about the parking quite a bit. I think there's been, I mean, I, I think the comment from public safety. And the public safety individuals who've been involved in this process from the beginning, who've been collaborating on the parking sufficiency of it. As well as the, you know, looking at, I mean, I've been to Warren and everybody's into Warren, but public safety folks have commented on the, the risks. And the dangers associated with. So I, I mean, from my perspective, in addition, I, I look at our peer review on the parking as well. Um, and, and how it proceeded through that peer review. So, um, I, I'm, I'm, I am okay with the parking. As proposed and have no further comment or conditions from that perspective from my, from my vote. So.
I, I, I agree with Joe. I think, I think a lot of people have, um, significant people in the community, um, public safety. And, uh, parents understanding the, the backups at various schools as well as the discussion about. A school being more than a, a school, which is not a new idea, but one that has been going on for a long time as schools become. Um, more in, um, places for other events besides just ones completely related to school. So for all of those reasons, I think the parking is really well laid out. We're getting those cars off the street with the ring road. And I would like to proceed with the parking as is.
Um, I agree with Joe and Trish, um, the, the, based on all the community feedback with God and the peer review. Um, uh, and plus that the space is going to be used for community events. So there's the need for more parking.
um, and plus that the space is going to be used for community events. So there's the need for more parking. Uh, if the parking wasn't going to be provided there, people were going to park on the road and then it would become a prob- a, a, a problem for the neighbor. So, uh, um, due to these, um, and, uh, and based on this, I also work for the parking.
Okay, Anna and Deepa.
Me now, I guess I'll speak. I, I think that in reviewing all the public comments, um, I, I saw a couple of things that jumped out at me. There was, there was, there was certainly a lot of support for the plan as is. Um, but I did not see a lot of analysis in the public comment relative to the perfect number, right? I feel like the number is fairly arbitrary that we're picking at. Um, and I, I agreed a lot with the public comment we got, I think from the fire department, um, official, I believe it was the, the fire chief who, who made a comment, listen, I don't know what the right number is. Um, I don't know what the right number is. I, I, I don't think it's three times, um, the current number. Um, I did not hear enough data to really convince me that, that there was, um, interest from the businesses. So, you know, the business association in Ashland was not involved. Um, that was one of the responses to one of the questions. Um, the, the theoretical use of the parking lot for, um, the public market was more of a theory and they were not, um, they were not part of the process. Um, and so what I'm hearing is we're going three times, uh, the current capacity for a school that has three more classrooms than the current school, um, or two more classrooms than the current school. Um, so I, I, I think it's an arbitrary number and I will be the minority voice to say that I would be more comfortable with doubling it, not tripling it. Um, I would be much more content with about one eighty or no more than two hundred spots. But I would be okay with lawns, more of a lawn space, um, that could be, um, a, a surface that takes a lot more of that rainwater, um, in a more natural way. Um, that could be used by the public for overflow parking. I don't think we need to pave for two hundred and seventy spots. I would have been satisfied with one eighty and lawn space.
Um. I feel the number that we started off, so from a parking number that was a nineteen fifties building, so we, as much our history is so important to us, we do have to look ahead and see what is Ashland going to be fifteen, twenty years from now on. So for me, the parking number count doesn't disturb me. Um, it just feels like what we're hearing from a lot of these community focuses maybe kind of having that medium of finding appropriate material instead of a sea of asphalt uh, may help in some way to kind of maybe something like a storm create or something which is a little more porous and helps with that. So I'm not sure if Concom would have a little win on kind of, because that's kind of tied into your stormwater somewhere. Um, so going back, the number of parking spots really doesn't bother me. I think we should look ahead as much as we're looking back. We should definitely look ahead of what Ashland is going to be ten, fifteen years from now on and how our world is changing with all the open spaces.
So, so Deepa, just, I, I just want to clarify that. So does that mean you, you don't su- support the parking as proposed? You just clarify what, what you're saying.
I'm good. I'm support that.
As proposed?
Yes.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, so. Lakshmi, you weighed in, right?
Yes, I said yes.
I'm sorry. Um, so it, it sounds like the consensus is, is around, we have consensus on the parking. Um, I, I don't, I don't, it doesn't sound like we have any conditions on the proposed, on the, on the parking as proposed, based on consensus of the group. Um, so, uh, uh, the only other one
I think.
I'm sorry.
Was it the property line thing?
Yes, the fence and the buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the fence and the buffer. So, I mean, I, I think, um, I thought, I think the proposal a way in, I think the proposal of the fence, um, was meaningful in terms of offering a buffer, additional buffer to a butters. I think my sense is, is that the, the, the school committee, the applicants are willing to kind of deploy that thoughtfully with each of the butters. So in other words, I, I think that my sense is, and I let the applicant speak for himself, but it, you know, if if a butters don't want a fence for some reason and are happy without it, I think that, you know, that we would, we would include the fence in the condition in our, in our decision, but we would leave the out that if, if a butters, if specific butters would rather not have a fence, would rather look at what's there than that's within their, within their option. They're not forced into a fence. So but, I mean, I, I, I thought it, we thought it was, you know, additional screening, um, additional planting. We got additional detail and I, and I think the fence will help. Um, I think it was four foot. I, I'm not super hung up on the height. Again, I think I would let the, that conversation defer to specific butters based on interactions with the committee and the, and the butter. So I think that's it for me.
So, so, so Joe, just wanted to clarify, it's a six foot stockade fence. The only time we talked about four foot, and this is the butter that I would, I would want some discretion with. It's the one right by the entrance. What we didn't do currently has a chain link fence, obviously doesn't obstruct visibility down the road and, and their experience of their own road, right? So we wouldn't want to take that six foot stockade fence and, and put a wall there. So the current plan has it stepping down to four foot there. Uh, but that, that's where we would, we would really want to have a conversation with that a butter and see what they want and would, you know, we looked at the board to see whether they would want us to come back for that, you know, change or, you know, um, or, or how to, how to, how to have that conversation and affect any changes that, that particular butter especially would, would like.
I mean, I, I'm willing to identify the, I, I don't mean to go, I'm sorry. I, I mean, from my perspective, I'm willing to identify the fence and the decision and, and acknowledge that it, it should be, it was agreed that it would be provided, but I'm willing to leave it open ended at the, at the butters and the committee's discretion, right? Meaning it enables you to do or not do what the butters want. Like, that's what I'm trying to say, maybe.
Right.
Is that in line with what you're saying?
Yeah, that, that's exactly what I'm saying. Like I said, I, I want to take the, the current chain link stands up, goes almost to the, uh, uh, to the, and we wouldn't want to put a six foot stockade fence that basically took their view down the road and turned it into a wall.
But yeah, I, I don't, yep, I don't want to do that. I think the only thing is Mr. Morgan did give specific comment about he, it's, he's, he appears to want the fence at the rear of his property. So to the extent that this project can provide the fence, if he wants the fence, I think we should give him the fence as long as we're not putting a fence on property that's not in the control of the town. I, I, so I, again, I'm blanketing all those butters as each of those butters there along that southeastern corner, like from my view, I'd like to just do what they want to do. So, um, along the lines of what you've proposed stockade fence, so.
So can I get, as, as each of you, uh, provide your, your opinion, I'd like to get some idea from the board, what the appetite is for the, the, the thought of the project team is to extend that fence to, to the butters discretion up until we hit removal, removal of trees and, and, and things like that. We, I, I, personally, I, I, I think that that's detrimental. I think everybody's talking about preserving, preserving as much, but, um, you know, we, we can, we can certainly do it. We could take a chain link fence all the way, uh, all the way up to Fisk and I, I, I don't see that as, as beneficial to anyone, but, uh, but I, I like to get the feel for, for that as we work with the butters. Um, what the board's take is on the removal of trees that would, uh, need to precipitate, uh, accommodation of fencing.
I'm going to be quiet and let the other members of the board speak here. I'm sorry.
I, I mean, I'm not hearing that all the butters want the fence. I, I, I'm hearing that one a butter wants the fence. So, um, I don't think it makes sense to, to risk removing of trees at the request of one a butter on, on the entire property. I think we need to be very narrow in what we're trying to accomplish. And remove as few trees as possible, if that's where we're headed.
I think the question is that along the area of the existing fence, which goes from the entrance to the school to, um, two and a half properties, that the, the new fence can follow the line of the existing fence. Um, and there's no trees in the way because it's exactly in the spot of the existing fence. But if that fence continues on as per the deed that was shown earlier, um, if that fence is continued on as the deed describes, they will likely run into trees. So you need to make a choice between fence or tree. I don't think I agree with the notion that this fence should zigzag all over the place to avoid trees. I think it's a question of fence, fence to follow the deed or tree. Um, I would, so I, I guess it depends on the legal matter of the deed and the fence. Um, but it also, it could be that the, the fence follows in between trees, you know, to that, to that line in segments rather than a straight fence, um, to fulfill, to fulfill that as well.
I guess I'm not clear as to why we need it in the first place. Can someone clarify that?
I believe there's a, oh, hold it, Peter.
Well, the number one thing is the deed that is reflected, the original deed that the town bought the property with reflects that on the second page in the first paragraph. There should be a fence along that property.
I just received an email from Mr.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
He said, my comment was that no trees to be removed. So I think he'd like a fence and he'd like to not remove trees. And I.
But, but then, I think, I think that makes it easy. I just wanted to clarify what the board's position on that is. So yeah, the, the goal of the, of the project team is to extend that stockade fence to, uh, the limit of work, which would basically screen all the open area. Um, and yeah, so it sounds like the, that, that, that was also going to work for him. So that, that's one.
So does that mean the fence stays on the straight line? Um, but does not go around, true, not, does not zigzag around trees. It stays on the straight line as much as possible, but it does not waver from the line described in the deed. It just, it is not going to zigzag around trees that are in the way.
I, I believe what we showed today, um, and as well on the plans as well, that even extends a little bit further than what we showed in the graphic. Does miss trees and I see Eddie and.
Right.
Uh, yes, certainly. We, uh, I mean.
Can we just put the graphic up again?
Right. Or, I mean, the, uh, the, uh, Tricia, I think you made the point about, uh, there's a fence there today. That fence goes away, it gets replaced with a stockade fence.
I was wondering about the part beyond that where there's no.
And so the part beyond that, uh, we can certainly, we had, uh, you know, we could, will, will certainly verify everything again in the field before any fence or a tree comes down or the fence goes up, but we were able to extend it without taking down any trees, but we, we will want to double check with existing conditions there, just to make sure. But I think, uh, I, I, I think we, we certainly hear the consensus about uh, the, the, uh, location of the tree is more important and the permanence of the tree is more important than the fence location.
Yeah. So I, I, I think I, I brought it up. So this can extend, I'm, I'm pretty sure the team's confident this can extend as needed here to, you know, to, to provide any, 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 uh, any buffer and any screening. So.
But, yeah, what, excuse me, what does happen is, as we move, uh, further to the east, is that the topography goes up. And so it becomes a little bit more challenging to kind of have, uh, that, uh, cedar fence work effectively because then it steps. I just want everybody to be aware that, uh, how the fence works in relationship to topography.
So I, I think we just, we, let's do the, I think the board is asking us to do the best that we can and talk and communicate with the butters and the butters to communicate with you guys to, to accomplish that goal as best we can.
Yep.
Is that?
Yep.
Yep, that's very good.
Um, okay. So uh, with regards to that fence and the plantings as proposed there, are, are there any other comments or concerns? Deepa, Lakshmi, Anna?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
So, okay, um, this is, I'm sorry, who's speaking? Okay, um, I think one last item in, in the original site plan, um, that the, there was a number of utilities or water, other lines that were going through that memorial. I just want to make sure in the final drawing that we approve on that those, that those pipes are moved around. I know they're not going to put it through the memorial site. I just like, let's just have the plan show as such that it's not going through the memorial site, just cross the T.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there, they were updated in the, uh, that was submitted on Monday.
I, I did try to look. It's black and white. The one that you presented had the color and it just was a lot easier to interpret. So I might've just missed it. So I apologize.
And Bill, can you confirm that?
I can, I can. I was just reaching for my mute button here. Um, yes, those, um, that was corrected in the updated, uh, set of drawings that were delivered to the.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I figured, I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, okay. So, um, not sure I have the mental capacity at the moment to recap all of that. However, I, I think, I think we've laid out the issues. I think we've identified a number of things we'd like to have for the next meeting. I, I think there's enough consensus there to have a draft opinion with conditions in it for us to review at the next meeting. And, you know, if we need to strike some conditions or depending on the tree discussion, if, if, if the condition comes out, we're, we're able to strike that. I, I think we can move towards that stage of this discussion at the next meeting unless, uh, I think the consensus discussion we've had is kind of built towards that, un- unless anybody violently disagrees on the board.
Um, is that a draft that, uh, Peter, that is that a draft that you will then send out at some point so that we can review it in advance?
Oh, you're on mute.
It's only eleven thirty. It's, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start working on a draft on Monday and I'll send that out. Uh, I'll also send a lot of the town council where I review. And, uh, and also I'll look into, I took the, uh, feverishly, feverishly notes tonight. And, uh, and I do have those two, uh, master and a law, uh, cases. I mean, I'm sorry, sections that I'm going to, uh, follow up with her on. But yes, I will be sending out the, the, uh, the, the, uh, decision as soon as possible. Okay.
Um, okay. So we do need to continue this public hearing to a date and time certain, correct?
Correct.
Um, all right. So, uh, Peter, what does the twenty sixth look like?
The twenty sixth looks like we will have the Village of the Americas, uh, which will, we need to pick a time for as well. Uh, and then we're also going to have Zero McGonagall Road. So we'll a time for that. So the question is, do you want this to go first or do you want this to be kind of stacked at the end of the night? I would say.
I, I think this should go first. We've spent a lot of time, uh, I think we should do this first and see where, see what we can do with it.
Okay. So let's put this at seven fifteen on the twenty sixth.
We'll entertain a, entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on, uh, ninety chest, ninety Chestnut Street. I think, thank you. I'm sorry. Ninety Con- ninety Concord Street to Thursday, August twenty sixth at seven fifteen PM.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Tricia Kendall, I.
Lakshmi Krishnan, I.
Anna Tesmeninsky, I.
So Rubertone, I. The motion passes five zero zero. Um, and so then, uh, one hundred Chestnut Street. Um, timing wise, what do we want to think, Peter? Do we want to give this, we want to say Chestnut Street at eight forty-five? Eight thirty?
Uh, do you think we're going to need that much time? Yeah.
I mean, I, if I knew the answer to that, I would win the lottery, my friend. Uh, I don't know. Um, what does the board think?
Eight forty-five seems good enough.
I mean, so let's talk it through. If we said it earlier and we go over, uh, people are sitting around waiting. If we said it later and we finish earlier than that, then.
We sit around.
We sit around and wait. So I, I, I mean, one hundred Chestnut Street is a, is a, is a big item. Uh, so I, I would say like, let's set it earlier rather than later.
I would say. I would say seven, I would say 8:15, which will give the board an hour to, to look at this.
Fine, okay. So entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on
100 Chestnut.
On 100 Chestnut Street to Thursday, August 26th at 8:15 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Tricia Kendall, I.
Lakshmi Krishna, I.
Anna Tesmanitsky, I.
So Ruperton, I, the motion to continue passes 5:00. And then 355 West Union. 9:45, Peter?
That's going to be, I would, I think we can move that to the first meeting in September.
Okay, and we should continue that, correct?
Correct.
Right. So in that first meeting in September, we're not going to want to put that first. We're going to have 100 Chestnut Street first likely. So what do you want to do? 8:45 for?
Yeah, I'd say 8:45.
Okay, so entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on 355 West Union Street to Thursday, September.
12th, I believe.
Thursday, September. Now, it's Thursday, September 16th.
Yeah, it's late because.
The ninth will be the second Tuesday in November.
Yeah.
September.
Be the ninth. All right, so entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on 355 West Union to Thursday, September 9th at 8:45 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Tricia Kendall, I.
Lakshmi Krishna, I. People, and goodbye.
Anna Tesmanitsky, I.
So Ruperton, I, the motion to continue passes 5:00. Do we need to do that with Zero McGonko?
So Zero McGonko, yes, we can continue that.
Continuing this thing for, for like seven months. Okay, so Zero McGonko, we're going to go to 8:26. At what time is sound, Peter?
Let's say, let's say 9:15. And if it goes over, it goes over.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on Zero McGonko Road to Thursday, August 26th at 9:15 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Tricia Kendall, I.
Lakshmi Krishna, I.
Anna Tesmanitsky, I.
So Ruperton, I, the motion to continue passes 5:00. I would.
Unless there are other announcements, I would like to make a motion that all minutes and everything else, wait till some other future date. And that we end the meeting at 11:38 PM.
Second, seconded. I don't even know what, you made a motion there, right?
I made a motion. I'm waiting for a second.
I seconded.
You seconded, okay. Tricia Kendall, I.
Lakshmi Krishna, I.
Anna Tesmanitsky, I.
So Ruperton, I. Motion passes 5:00. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.